One moment.
I don't see the chair anywhere, Byron, so the floor is yours.
Okay, are you ready, Linda?
I am ready. It is in progress.
Okay.
I believe it's live.
I'd like to call this special meeting to order. April fourth, two thousand twenty-three, town planning and zoning. First item on the agenda is the approval of the February twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose?
Aye.
Abstentions? Chair vote, aye. First item on the agenda was the secretary. I'll read the legal notice.
A part of, I'm sorry. Pardon. Do we take the roll first? How did the order goes?
I think we have a quorum.
Right, we'll take the roll to ensure who is present for the record as this is being transcribed. Who normally reads the roll? It's usually the secretary.
Yeah, we actually, we never do a roll call. We just always see whether or not we have a quorum. And I think we do have a quorum. I don't, I actually have a list of names in front of me, but it looks like everybody's here. Except Barry.
Okay.
And Dwight.
No, Dwight's here.
Wait, wait, wait. Nope, yep, he's there. Sorry, and Michael. Yep, we've got it.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry about that, Michael.
I don't see Michael.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, there he is. Yep, yep, yep.
Hi. And, and just for transcription purposes, you know, recordings don't stay on forever. However, many meeting minutes does last on our records eternally. So if you'd like, I can just quickly read the quorum. Through the members, and that way we can say aye, just for the record purposes. Linda Loriano, I'm staff zoning enforcement officer. Michelle Adams.
Here.
Barry Betperson. Dwight Bolton.
Here.
Byron Lester.
Here.
Kevin Harfin Hussein.
Present.
Thank you. Stephen Millet.
Present.
Michael Oliver.
Present.
Kathleen Blint.
Present.
And I believe one more member who has not been attending is Brenda Watson.
I'm not even sure if she's still a member.
Okay.
She's not been a member for years.
Thank you for, for letting us know. I'll update our records.
All right.
Excuse me, Linda, is a point of order. If there are two alternates here, are we both voting tonight?
There is only one.
Michael isn't, Mr. Oliver isn't alternate anymore.
Oh, no, great.
Well, that's right.
Correct. Yep, this is where the appointment happens of the alternates. We have one, two, three, four full members present, five, I'm sorry, and one alternate member present.
Six.
So six altogether. I don't, I don't believe we need to appoint the alternate unless you'd like to appoint the alternate to fill the vacancy of one of the chair full members that are not present.
Point of order is six and one.
Only one alternate here, which is Katie.
Six and one.
So she should, I guess she should be fine.
I should vote.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. And then who's serving for chair tonight as well?
I'll be serving in Barry's place for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, folks. Just want to have it straight for the record and may continue your order.
The legal notice was published in the Hartford Current, March ninth and March sixteenth. Notice is hereby given that the Town Planning and Zoning Commission will conduct public hearings at a meeting on March, on April fourth, two thousand twenty-three, special meeting commencing at seven PM to consider the following. Special permit application for Yenil Medina for approval for a used car dealer and repair shop. Property located at fifteen Southwood Drive in an I-2 zone. Owner is KNS Southwood LLC. And before we start, I'll just briefly go over the procedures on how we conduct our public hearings. For anyone that's new or to say first time at the hearings. The first order of business is the applicant presents. Second, we'll have comments from the planner. Next, we'll have questions from the audience, questions from the commission, comments from the audience, comments from the commission. Then we'll have the applicant have a last chance for any closing remarks, and at that point, the chair will close the hearing. So is there anyone here representing Yenil Medina?
Yeah, this is Attorney Man Jefico, and I'm here representing KNS Properties, Yenil Medina.
You may proceed.
Thank you. So Mr. Medina made application for a special permit to have a used car dealership on this property. By way of background, in two thousand and twelve, this property was approved already as a vehicle repair and storage facility with twenty-four hour operation. It was before your commission approved, and the only thing we're asking for is to continue the same operation, but to allow Mr. Medina seven spaces in which he would have used cars for sale. The remainder of the operation is going to remain the same, which was already approved in two thousand and twelve. He's going to continue that. And the rear of the building is still going to be used for storage. It was previously used for tractor trailer cabs, but now it's going to be used for both trucks and cars in the same area. So he's got plenty of parking in the back for his repairs. That isn't going to change. And if you have the site plan in front of you in the front of the building, there's going to be seven cars that is labeled, which he's going to sell the used cars from. This isn't a, a large change from what's been going on there anyway. And it was already approved, so we ask that the commission continue with what the use already was and add the used car dealership for the maximum of seven cars on the lot for sale at a time.
That your presentation?
That's it.
Okay, thank you. We'll now have comments from the planner. Jonathan?
Mr. Chairman, this is fairly straightforward. As the applicant indicated, it's basically a continuation of what's there with the addition of the limited sale of used cars. There's no exterior alterations proposed. There's no signage proposed. We think it's fairly straightforward. In the staff's opinion, it meets the conditions of the, of the site plan approval requirements, and we have no objection to, for the commission moving forward on this. In the report we sent to you, we suggested the conditions, which are basically the the conditions that go with a, with a site plan approval. I can run through them if you want, but the staff would support this application.
Thank you. Is there any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay. Let's, let's start with the commission. We'll start with Ms. Blint. Any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, but I should let you know that I should recuse myself from voting on this application because I was not aware on the conflict of interest disclosure form that the applicant would be represented by an attorney who I believe also represents a member of my family, and I would like to avoid any appearance of impropriety.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Adams, any questions?
No, no questions.
Mr. Millet?
No questions.
Mr. Bolton?
Does the applicant foresee the need for a sign down the road?
So there may be a sign down the road, but in the staff's remarks and in the conditions, any signage would have to be approved by the zoning department. So should he require a sign, he'd have to go before the zoning department in accordance with the zoning regulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Hussein? Any questions? Sorry, none at the moment. Thank you. Mr. Oliver, any questions?
No questions. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, and Chair, I don't have any either. So, well, I don't think there was anybody out there. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Okay, we'll start with any comments, Mr. Oliver.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Mr. Hussein?
No comments at the moment. Thank you.
Mr. Bolton?
No comments. Thank you.
Ms. Adams?
No comment.
And Chair, I have no comments either. Seems like it was pretty straightforward. Would the applicant like any further comments before we close the hearing?
Just asked that you approve it. The town is favorable to the application, and we ask that you give it an approval. That's all.
Thank you. At this time, the chair entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Been moved in second. Any objections? Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Abstention? Chair vote, aye.
Staying.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Blint. So is there a motion on the application?
I'll, I'll move to approve the special permit application for Yenil Medina to operate used car dealership and auto repair shop at fifteen Southwood Drive in an I-2 zone, owner KNS Southwood LLC. The application is found to meet the special permit criteria found in section nine point five E of the zoning regulations. The approval is conditioned on the representations made on the record this evening and the conditions outlined by the town planner and director and the memo dated March twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Been moved in second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Oppose? Abstention?
Staying.
And the chair vote, aye. Congratulations.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commission. Normally, if we were there in person, we would grab the certificate. How can my client get the certificate to record on the land records?
We'll reach out to Linda Loriano. Sorry. We'll reach out to the applicant within fifteen days.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is also a public hearing. I'll read the legal notice. Legal notice was published March ninth and March sixteen in the Hartford Current for a special meeting of Town Planning and Zoning Commission on April fourth, two thousand twenty-three, commencing at seven PM. Special permit application for Everton Stewart for approval for a barber shop. Property located at eight thirty-six Park Ave, unit sixty-five, in the BCD zone. Owner, Lost Cables Cabos Two Equity LLC. Is there anyone here representing that application?
Yep, I'm Everton Stewart, the owner.
How you doing? Mr. Stewart?
Good evening, good evening. Um, yeah, I'm looking for approval for a barber shop at, at that location, fifty-five, unit fifty-five, Wynton Berry Mall. Right now, in the plans that I submitted, I believe I have five barber chairs, barber stations going in, a stylist area, two office areas, two wash sinks, three hand sinks. All my approvals have been approved by the fire department, building department's been in, health department's been in. So pretty much all my approvals have been done. That's pretty much it. I'm looking to get an approval to open the shop.
Hey, thank you. Jonathan? Any comments?
Another really straightforward one, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is simply a change of use because it's in the in the downtown zone. It required a special permit. I can tell you that going forward, the staff is looking at the possibility of not requiring a full public hearing for this type of a very simple use change. It's really a burden, in our opinion, to both the applicant and the commission. But that said, there's no, there's no changes to the, to the physical context of the structure. There's no, there's no added demand on parking, which is readily available or on the streets, and and it really satisfies, again, all the, all the requirements of both the zone and the and the site special permit, and we would staff wholeheartedly support this application and would urge the commission to do likewise.
Thank you very much. At this point, is there any one from the audience that have any questions regarding this application? Seeing none, we'll go to the commission. We'll start back with you again, Ms. Blint. Any questions?
Yes, sir. In terms of signage for the business, will there be a separate application for this?
Um, yeah. The sign company that I'm working with, they're going to submit a, a signed application to zoning once this process is finished.
Thank you. And is this an interior space at Wynton Berry Mall, or is it exterior facing?
It's an exterior facing Jerome Avenue.
Jerome Avenue. Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Next, Ms. Adams. Any questions?
Just a quick question. So the, the toilets, is it male, female, or coed?
Coed.
Okay. That's it.
Mr. Millet?
No, no questions.
Mr. Bolton?
No questions, Mr. Thank you.
Mr. Hussein?
Yeah, one quick question, Mr. Everton Stewart. The learning center you have, are you potentially doing, putting in a cheer there maybe to help teach some of our youths or, you know, the trade or anything like that? Any program like that?
Yeah, eventually. I don't have the, the state permits to do it right now, but eventually I have the space for it. So once the state approves me to be able to use that space, I'm hoping to be able to do some apprentice programs.
Excellent. We'd love to have that too. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Oliver, any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you.
I just have one. Mr. Stewart, what are your hours of operation?
My hours of operation, I'll be closed on Mondays, Tuesdays. I'll be there from nine to eight. Wednesdays, nine to eight. Thursdays, nine to eight. Fridays, nine to eight. Saturdays, nine to eight, and then Sundays, ten to four.
Great. Thank you. Okay, at this time, is there any comments from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none. Go back to the commission. Mr. Oliver, Mr. Oliver, any comment?
No. Oh, yeah, just glad to see somebody coming in and building up the community.
Thank you, man. I appreciate it.
Mr. Hussein?
No, all set. Thank you.
Ms. Adams?
Yep, the mall needs, needs new business. Good to see you coming in, and I love the New York style Sunday hours. We need some of that around here. I remember my days in Far Rockaway. You could get a haircut on Sunday. All right.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Millet? Any comments?
Just good to see businesses going into the mall.
Mr. Bolton?
No comments, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Blint?
Welcome to Bloomfield, sir.
Thank you.
And my only comment is I wish you the best of luck if this is approved and looking forward to coming down to your grand opening.
I appreciate you guys. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, is there any closing remarks you'd like to make?
No.
No? All set? Okay, at this time, the chair entertain a motion to close the, this application, close this hearing?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? And the chair vote, aye. Okay, commission? It's up to you.
I'll make a motion to approve the special permit application for Everton Stewart for the approval of a barber shop. Property located at eight thirty-six Park Ave, unit fifty-five, in a BCD zone, owner, Lost Cabos Second Equity LLC. Obviously, this aligns with the staff comments, commissioner comments, and the plans and application submitted on, as dated in the public hearing. I'll second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstention? Chair vote, aye. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, guys. I appreciate it. It's been a long time coming. You guys helped, man. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is also a public hearing. And I'll read the public notice. Notice was published in the Hartford Current, March ninth and March sixteenth. Legal notice published for a special meeting of Town Planning and Zoning. Notice is hereby given that the Town Planning and Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing at a meeting on April fourth, two thousand twenty-three, commencing at seven PM to consider the following. Special permit application from Freedom Patel for approval for a drive-through fast food restaurant with associated signage. Property located at forty Tungus Ave in the BCD zone. Owner, Bloomfield Equities LLC. Is there anyone here representing that application?
There is. For the record, Steve Glowacki with our G O'Connell and Associates. We are the engineers on the project. Joining me today, should there be a need for comment, is Robert Grimaldi from G141 Architecture and Lawrence Ben Bassett from the Popeyes Group. May I share my screen for the presentation?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Okay. So we come before you today requesting a site plan review, special permit, as noted in the, in the, in the public notice. We've also submitted to the, to the inland wetlands and water courses commission for approval, as well as there are some resource areas on the site. The existing site, as you noted, is at Fort Tungus Ave. It's bounded by the Sitco Station on the east, Tungus Avenue to the south, and the Philly Pond Plaza to the north and west. The, the site area itself, and I'll move to the next site plan. The site area itself is approximately point eight of an acre for the entirety of the eight point three acre site. Approximately five point nine acres of the entirety of the site is impervious, including this area primarily. So we intend to displace this portion of the parking area with this, with this proposal. Access to the site is achieved by a one-way access into the site coming from Tungus Ave, as well as, if I may move the cursor a bit, as well as access into the site through the main drive. And then there's egress proposed to the, to the east as well. The proposed site is intended to consist of a twenty-five hundred square foot building with a drive-through. The restaurant is proposed to have approximately twenty-four seats. There's a double drive-through, as I mentioned, with with space for approximately sixteen vehicles that wraps around the east side of the building. There are also some ADA spaces planned. Vehicular access to the site, as I mentioned, is, is this modified one-way in. This one-way in currently serves as access for service trucks. So the intent is to repurpose that, if you will, and use it as well to enter the site for primarily the drive-through use. As part of the shopping center in total, looking at the parking requirements, there are a hundred and sixty-six minimum spaces to a hundred and ninety-four maximum spaces required. They'll, will ultimately have two hundred and eighty-five spaces proposed. So we are displacing some, which brings us closer to the ratio. However, we are still compliant. There is a dumpster enclosure planned at the northeast corner of the site, and that will be screened. And there is some pedestrian connectivity planned with a, with a walkway tying into the sidewalk system along Tungus as well. There'll be a total decrease in pervious, impervious area by virtue of the addition of several islands around the site, which will obviously help with landscaping, and I can get to that in a moment. Moving on to stormwater, and I won't get too deep in the weeds. I know it's not a very glamorous subject, but stormwater will be captured from the site into catch basins, and we'll go through a particle separator finally into a basin where additional water quality treatment would, would, will be obtained. And finally, it'll be discharged through the existing pipe system that comes across and flows down to Washbrook. As again, there is a decrease in impervious area, we will be decreasing runoff and will also be increasing treatment quite a bit by virtue of, of the systems I noted. The site will be served from a utility standpoint by a water line proposed, a water line connection proposed off of Tungus Ave, which will include a new hydrant on the site and domestic supply to the building. We also plan on utilizing the gas main that comes through the site, which of course will have to be coordinated with the providers. Finally, there is a sanitary line proposed, yeah, along with a grease trap for, for kitchen grease waste. And site electric will be served by a Vera Transformer, again, coming from Tungus Avenue. Moving on to site landscape. So the site will be, will be thoroughly landscaped with shade trees, including red maples and honey locusts to the north and west and arbovites along the south edge of the site. Shrubs will also be used, including Shrubs will also be used, including pepper bush, inkberry, and sumac, along with smaller ground cover. There'll be a modest increase, as I mentioned, of open space, so again, uh, from a, from a perspective of landscaping, it's thoroughly landscaped. Uh, the site includes perimeter and central landscaping to, uh, to enhance the aesthetic of the area. As I mentioned earlier, the area is primarily just a parking area now, so there'll be quite a, quite a good look to that. There'll be a, a natural buffer around the li- the, the dumpster enclosure. And, uh, finally, the perimeter landscape is going to provide, uh, screening and, uh, visual enhancement from Tungus Ave, as well as from the Sitco Station, a neighboring Sitco Station. We just jumped down a sheet. For site lighting, uh, we're gonna have a, uh, several site light poles positioned around the site. There'll be minimal, um, there'll be no light spillage into the neighboring adjacent parcels. Uh, the sky, the lights are designed to be, uh, Doc Sky compliant, so there'll be no, uh, light projecting up into the sky. And, um, these are intended to be, uh, L E D lighting, which, uh, you know, is going to be, uh, is going to serve the area sufficiently, and you can see from the photometrics that, uh, we will provide sufficient lighting around the entirety of the, uh, of the project area. From a traffic perspective, uh, we met with town staff and, and, and understanding the, the minimal de minimis nature of, of the traffic on this. A traffic report wasn't needed for, for the, for the commission or for this, for this analysis. However, it's important to note that we will require approval from the Connecticut Department of Transportation, as well as the Office of State Traffic Administration. Uh, we've had the benefit of, of working with town staff already. We had a video meeting with, uh, Peter Castel, uh, Castaldi, Justin La Fountain, and, uh, John Coleman as well. Uh, back on, uh, March fifteenth to go over some concerns, and we've received a formal, uh, memo, uh, from Peter Castaldi, as well as some additional comments from, uh, from John Coleman. We've already incorporated those, started incorporate those into the plan set that you see before you today. And, uh, and of course, would, uh, like to have the opportunity to finalize those, uh, to the satisfaction of the, of town staff. Uh, finally, I'd like to thank the town staff, they've been very helpful with us as we move forward through the project, very thorough, and I've enjoyed, uh, enjoyed working with them. If there's anything, uh, you have questions on, please let me know.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. Jonathan?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, for, I forgot to mention at the beginning of the meeting, but you may wonder where Justin is this evening. He would much per- quite frankly prefer to be here, but as you probably all know, there's, uh, the council is, uh, holding their deliberations on the budget this evening. And the acting town manager asked that all department heads and division heads, uh, be present at that meeting. So he, uh, was unable to be two places at one time. Uh, so you have Linda and I filling in for him, and hopefully we can, uh, we can do a, uh, a commendable job, but Justin, uh, does send his apologies and his, uh, actually, and his warm greetings to all of you, and I should have mentioned that at the beginning of the meeting. Regarding this application, um, as was indicated, um, our principal concerns were the, uh, internal, um, traffic, um, movements on the property. Uh, and its relationship to the entrance and exit to the, uh, to the shopping mall. And also to the, uh, to the truck movements, um, uh, both after it's completed, but particularly during construction, since, um, they will not have access to their present, uh, truck entrance. As also indicated, we've had some very fruitful conversations with the applicant. Um, and, um, we are awaiting their final, um, presentation on their, their reaction to our, uh, to our recommendations, and looking at the plan they showed this evening, it looks like we're, we're certainly moving in the right direction. Um, as Justin's, uh, brief memo indicated, uh, this application was tabled by the, uh, by the inland wetlands commission at their meeting and postponed to their next meeting in April. Uh, and accordingly, the, uh, staff recommendation is that this time, uh, the, the T P C also tabled uh, this application and hold the hearing open, uh, until our April twenty-seventh meeting. At which time, I'm sure, um, both the applicant and the, uh, and the staff will have their final recommendations to the commission.
Thank you, Jonathan, um, question for you. Should we proceed with any questions and comments and then table? Or would you prefer to save that till afterwards, uh, when we pick it back up?
My recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is that unless someone has a pressing q- question now that they think might, um, uh, influence the applicant in, in making any particular changes, I would defer, uh, both questions and comments until, um, the hearing is continued at your April twenty-seventh meeting, uh, but that certainly is a decision that, uh, rightfully rests in the hands of you and the commission, but the staff does not, um, at this point, see a need, unless the commission feels strongly to go through that process now, and then, and then, then have to repeat it again on the twenty-seventh.
No, I, uh, I think your recommendation, uh, is sufficient. Um, so at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to table this application until our April twenty-seventh meeting?
And, Mr. Chairman, keep the hearing open.
Yes, and, and keep this public hearing open, just to actually table this and keep the public hearing open until our April twenty-seventh meeting, is there a motion for that?
Motion.
Or second? Second? It's been moved in second, any further discussions on this issue? Seeing none, all those in favor of tabling this and keeping this application open till our April twenty-seventh?
I'm sorry, I was on mute, I'm sorry, I'm, I was trying to get your attention, but I was on mute, quick question, sir, quick question. So, uh, it was said earlier in the presentation that D O T approval, I guess it's the state road, um, is not required to proceed forward, so i- is that best practice that, that we not wait until D O T, uh, performs their overall traffic, uh, analysis and review? Make any comments, uh, give the applicant opportunity to make any revisions or, or changes, is there a reason why we wouldn't allow that process to play out first before we reviewed it? And it's just a question.
I, I think you may have misunderstood, um, in fact, it does re- I think the applicant indicated properly that, in fact, it does require approval from the state, uh, since it, um, since it en- enters and exits onto a state highway.
You know, I understood that, it was my understanding that he hadn't received that prior to presenting, uh, this evening.
But, may I answer?
Sure, please.
Absolutely.
So, so we do require, uh, Connecticut D O T approval, however, D O T will not review until local approval. Unfortunately, it, it's a bit inverted, uh, as, you know, quite often, they may have some recommendations that would influence the design, but, um, that's currently their, their, their process.
Thank you.
Good question.
So, I do have a question, uh, that follows, uh, Mr. Bolton's comments, does that mean that we would be reviewing this on the twenty-seventh without any traffic input?
The, the, that, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct, and, and, and based on tha- that, uh, notion, I should say, we, we do have a traffic engineer on board on the project who's working on the state approvals, uh, however, in preliminary discussions with, uh, with town staff, they felt that it was, uh, de minimis enough that, that, uh, that type of traffic, uh, report wouldn't be required for this project. Uh, understanding that we did have a review with the, uh, Connecticut D O T as well as O S T.
But if we had questions about how much traffic this could potentially generate, would your traffic engineer be able to give us any idea?
Ye- yes, we could get, uh, preliminary information if that is a concern and a question for staff, we can certainly get that from the traffic engineer, as I mentioned, we have engaged them. They, they haven't started their full review, but, uh, but I could certainly get that information.
Great, that would be appreciated.
It would.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a couple of questions too, um, quickly, uh, because I think it may impact the site plan for when they resubmit again next week. Or next, here this month, um, in, in line with everyone, whatever I'm saying with the, uh, traffic analysis. If you can find out for us, Steve, the queue at maximum, would you, what your traffic engineer thinks at the maximum capacity for the drive-through, if there is a queue that would spill on, on to, on to Tungus Avenue? If you can run that at max peak to see if there is going to be a queue that is going to back into Tungus Avenue, I know you've probably done a preliminary, but that'd be great to have that too, just in case, what the mid, the peak flows are and what the queue is. Um, the second thing is, I don't think I've seen a, a clearance sign on the drive-through, I didn't think, um, I don't know, maybe I missed it. I, um, is, if it's there, it'd be good, because I know sometimes people would rent a box truck and forgot they didn't bring their car, and, you know, because I think I mentioned it in the design review, is it down there, Steve?
Yeah, there, there are a number, there are clearance bars over on, on this portion of the drive-through as well as over here.
Oh, you don't have one, okay, I see what you're saying, in the outer lanes, they don't have any, because, um.
There is.
Yeah, there is up here, uh, right at the, at the edge of the island, we, we don't have it floating in the, in the parking area, it's over here prior to the redo.
Okay, okay, alright, great, I didn't, I didn't realize that, that's the clearance bar there, okay. And, okay, great, so that's there, and then the other quick thing is then, in the, um, on the site plan, and if you come back down to the, where the, the one-way entrances on the, um, into the complex. That curb cut, is it, I know you have a radius there right now, or right, right over here where the stop sign is, come over to, I'm sorry, to your left?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know, um, that's a pretty wide, um, driveway there, two twenty feet, right, this one way in. I know in the past, someone is going to try to hang out it, you know, pull out of there. Because I didn't, I know it says one way, some people aren't going to go all the way around. So maybe if you tighten that radius a little bit, or kind of shorten that, so that it's only accessible for one, maybe one car only. You know, to, 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 to demerit folks from driving out of there, because some people will do, try to drive out that one way, I'm pretty sure about it. So just probably look at that radius of, of trying to reduce that, so that it only, that it discourages that.
We will look at that, we, uh, we did, at one point in time, this was, believe it or not, uh, we had two-way circulation around the building, and there were concerns that people would leave here and try to do the U-turn, uh, around here, so we did channel that down. I can narrow it a little bit more, I just want to make sure that emergency vehicles can easily access, but we'll check that turn and see if we can narrow that down.
Yeah, just a little bit, I think, just to discourage them, that's all I had, sorry, sorry, um, Mr. Chair, thanks.
Oh, no, 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 no problem.
I, I do have one before we close, Mr. Chair, uh.
Absolutely.
I'm not sure, was there a memo that came out from the design review board on, on their feedback? It, it looks like in, uh, Justin's memo, there was, uh, just a very quick reference to it, but no details. And that, I think, would be helpful to have if, before the, um, we open this back up again.
We'll make sure you get that, um.
Thank you.
Chairman, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
I believe, uh, Mr. Hussein re- mentioned, uh, in reference to the queue, and I'm sure Steve's traffic, uh, engineers will address this to his, uh, liking. But just another part of that, besides the actual traffic pieces of it. We do have, in this location, as Steve's presenting, Steve, if you could pan down a little, um, you know, there's a full two drive lanes, which increase the amount of queue that goes on within it. Um, and depending on, yeah, we're blessed with, uh, enough traffic that we need it, um, besides the fact that we have the two ordering stations. Um, we also can, uh, supplement that with staff, and it's another way of cutting the line if that ends up being an issue. Um, and, again, going this next step further, if we end up really having it a Chick-fil-A moment, if I should say it that way, um, if we have an issue of that nature, which, again, if we're blessed to have that. Um, at that point, then, we just get the personnel out there to ask people to move along or park. Uh, we understand that we are a good neighbor, and we have to maintain that status as a good neighbor, and we will get the traffic moving. And unfortunately, we'll ask, you know, some people maybe to drive around again or something, but if it ends up looking like it's going to end up being a, a problem, that's what personnel's there for. Uh, you know, it's great to rely on all the, uh, mechanics and the machinery, but once in a while, it has to come back down to the humans and saying, look, we have to move along, because we have to keep traffic open, we know that's a concern to all our neighbors, not just this township. All our neighbors, and, you know, uh, Popeyes has the staff that can take care of these things. But, again, the traffic engineer will officially give you the, you know, the I E T, uh, statements about it, but th- this is, you know, from a organizational staffing level, uh, Popeyes does these things.
Hey.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Well, is there any, any more before we table this for now, we'll still open it back up and continue with the questions and comments, but there's anything else right now before, uh, you're welcome to do it, uh, if not, there's a motion out there to table this and reopen it again on April twenty-seventh at our next meeting.
Yeah, I think we, um, we made the motion, I think, my running just have to call the votes.
Yeah, I made them up with, I don't know if they were ever got a second, because they start questioning.
Yeah, I, I seconded.
Oh, you did second it? Okay, I, I, I wasn't sure, because I think you had the first question on it. Okay, great, it's been moved in second, any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor of tabling this and re- and reconvening and reopen it on April twenty-seven at our next meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, chair votes aye. So, guys, later this month.
Appreciate it, have a great night, take care.
Okay, you too, thank you.
If I may, real quick, I know that, um, it's been, um, continued to next week, I just, I have the question and answer here, and there were three questions that came up, um, during, during the hearing, and I apologize. Um, but I just want to read it for the record, and maybe it could be addressed at the next meeting, is it too late? Or maybe they can just attend, we can, I, we can answer, uh, these are attendees that, uh, we are not able to see, but are, uh, in attendance.
Oh, oh, okay, well, we weren't, we weren't even going to go there.
Okay, never mind.
At this meeting, yeah, but if you, if you want to read it for the record, that's fine.
I'm just going to read it for the record, I will respond that it's been continued to the next meeting. Uh, Susan Murray at seven thirty-four P M. Uh, asked, why is the traffic impact considered minimal? Minimal if there is a double drive-through? Uh, Susan Murray again at seven thirty-five P M. As a resident of Mills Pond condo, I am very concerned about traffic in the neighborhood. Um, and then again, at seven thirty-nine P M. So, would this be approved without a traffic study? Question mark.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Linda, appreciate that.
Okay.
Okay, moving along, the next item on the agenda also is a public hearing. And I'll read the legal notice. Uh, legal notice was published in the Hartford Current on March ninth and March sixteenth for the following special meeting, special meeting, Town Planning and Zoning Commission. Notice is hereby given that the Town Planning and Zoning Commission will conduct a public hearing at a special meeting on April fourth, two thousand twenty-three, commencing at seven P M. To consider the following. Special permit application from North Point Development, comma, LLC for approval for warehouse, warehouse use. Permanent site reduction in parking, temporary installation, deferral of parking, retaining wall height and light pole height. Property located at ninety dash one sixteen West Dudley Town Road in an I-two zone. Owner is Connecticut Valley Properties, the third, comma, LLC. Is there anyone here representing that application?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, I'll get us started. Good evening, good evening, my name is Tom Cody. I'm an attorney at the firm of Robinson and Cole, our office is located at two eighty Trumbull Street in Hartford. And I'm here, um, representing the applicant, North Point Development LLC. Um, with me this evening, I believe there are also panelists, um, Brian Rosland, a development manager with North Point Development. David Gagnon, a professional engineer and senior project manager with Langen Engineering, um, out of New Haven. And Scott Hesketh, a. And Scott Hesketh, a professional engineer and manager of transportation engineering. With F A Hesketh and Associates, traffic engineering consultants based in East Granby. I would just note for the record. Our office had um notice signs posted on the subject property. And we also mailed notice regarding the public hearing. To all owners of property within five hundred feet of the project site. Documentation regarding the notices were previously sent to town staff. So. The property in question. Located on West Dudley Town Road is owned by Connecticut Valley Properties Three LLC. The applicant, North Point Development, is under contract to purchase the property. The property is currently developed. With a fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty square foot industrial building. Which is located along the western boundary of the property, fronting West Dudley Town Road. The majority of the property is currently utilized. As a material stockpile. Processing and equipment storage yard. For the Butler Company. Previous development of the property for Butler was authorized under several municipal approvals. Including a wetlands map amendment and a wetland permit approval in two thousand and seventeen. Construction activities associated with that approved development for Butler have taken place. And they've generally consisted of grading. And resurfacing the former agricultural field with gravel and millings. For the outside storage of vehicles, equipment, materials, and material processing areas. Now, with this application, North Point seeks to redevelop the property. With the construction of a building for a warehouse use. Together with other associated site improvements. As described in the application materials, and as we will show you this evening. The project has been designed to limit. The development activities to the existing limits of disturbance. At the site and those that were previously approved for the Butler Company. Bloomfield. In the Wetlands and Watercourses Commission has unanimously approved an inland wetlands permit for the project, and they did that at their meeting. On February twenty first of this year. So, as you mentioned in the uh legal notice for this hearing. Our application includes five special permit requests. We will describe them in detail as we go through our presentation. Um, very, very briefly, they include, uh, first. A special permit request for the warehouse use. Of the property in the I two zone district. The second and third special permits both relate to. Parking reductions. Uh, one, a permanent parking reduction, and the other temporary deferral. And the reason for these two requests is that the regulations currently do not have a specific. Parking ratio for a warehouse use. And if you apply the standard manufacturing use. We believe that a. Uh, a tremendous surplus of parking would would be created by that, and so these two requests relate to. Um, trying to make the parking the right size for this project. We'll get into that in a few minutes. The fourth and fifth special permits. Um, regard retaining wall height, we have one portion of the project. Where there would be a retaining wall that would be greater than the four-foot maximum set forth in the regulations. And we also have a request to increase light pole height. Consistent with the regulations, but for the purpose of reducing the overall number of poles. That would be installed in the parking areas. So that's a quick review of the five special permits. Let me just briefly now tell you how our presentation will proceed. First, Brian Rosland with North Point will give you a brief introduction uh to the applicant. David Gagnon with Langen will describe the proposed project, including. Um. The building itself, the grading, the parking, access, stormwater, erosion control measures. Brian Rosland will describe for you the exterior building materials. And the type of construction that's proposed. Scott Hesketh. Will describe the traffic impact report that. Um, his office has prepared and which has been submitted with the application. I'll conclude with a summary of the application, and that will conclude our presentation. Um, so first up will be Brian Rosland with North Point. We will, we do have a PowerPoint presentation. Um, to assist in our presentation. And I believe that David Gagnon will be running that. And I think he will need. Um. The ability to share his screen to get that started. So right now, I'd like to turn the floor over to Brian Rosland.
Thank you very much, Tom, and thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'd also like to say thank you to uh staff, planning, building department, uh, other stakeholders such as. The Blue Hills Fire Department, um, there's really have been uh thoughtful with their comments and concerns. Uh, and also showing a willingness to to meet and express those concerns and work through solutions. Um, so North Point Development is a privately owned real estate company. Um, we develop, we have a national presence in development, but we have a regional focus, and I personally am part of the northeast team. Um, we do specialize in industrial development consistent with what we're going to be presenting this evening. And we do have a a large portfolio of over a hundred and forty million square feet. Of similar building space. Across the country. Um, many of the employees of North Point Development are engineers like myself, and really, we take a hands-on approach and really like to roll up our sleeves. Um, to solve problems through all phases of development. We, we do typically hold on uh long-term as owners of the developments that we develop. Um, seen by. Having over a hundred and forty million square feet across the country. And we really look to lean lean into our core values and be a community partner because of that reason. Um, to date, I've I've personally made efforts to to be up in Bloomfield, um, meeting some adjacent neighbors. Um, and business owners and walking through and discussing some of their concerns. Um, and even as as recent as this afternoon, I talked with Mr. Mazzarella, um, from the Turbine Maintenance Inc. Uh, down the road at one thirty-one West Dudley Town Road, uh, because he had expressed some concerns, and I wasn't able to meet with him in person when I was in town last, so. Um, we like to to make sure that it's known that we are community partners, we are here for the long term. And we are excited for the opportunity tonight, um, for the team to present the proposed project. And we feel it addresses many of the concerns that have been raised, so. With that being said, I'd like to turn it over to Dave to present and start the presentation.
Sure, thank you, Brian. Um, for the record, my name is Dave Gagnon. Um, I'm a civil engineer with Langen Engineering. Located in New Haven, Connecticut. Um, so I'll share my screen and start um. Our presentation here, um, bear with me. Okay, everyone can see my screen, okay? Seems like, okay, great. Okay, um, so I'm going to briefly bring you through the existing conditions of the site. Um, go through the current operations and then get into our proposed development. Um, our first slide here is an existing conditions aerial, uh, note, uh, north is to the right. Our project site can be seen in the middle of this slide highlighted in yellow. It's roughly a fifty-six acre parcel. Located on ninety dash one sixteen West Dudley Town Road. Um, it is zoned in the I two industrial zone. It's also surrounded um by the I two industrial zone. The site is bound by West Dudley Town Road to the west. Um, beyond that are industrial properties. Um, and more industrial properties and commercial properties are to the north of our site here. Um, beyond that is Blue Hills Avenue, uh, Route one eighty-seven, um, and further beyond that is uh the town of Windsor. Uh, east of our site on the bottom of the screen is primarily woodlands. Uh, to the south of our site is again West Dudley Town Road and more industrial properties. Um, as you can see, uh, the site here in the middle is currently used as a site contractor's lay-down yard. Uh, processing air, uh, processing area and storage yards since roughly uh twenty seventeen. Loading here. In this next slide is another aerial that gives you a tighter perspective of our site. Um, as I mentioned, the site is currently used as a site contractor's lay-down space. Um, as our attorney mentioned, on the west side, again, north is to the right. On the west end of our property, there's currently a roughly sixteen thousand square foot industrial building. Um, there are four curb cuts to the site. There are three curb cuts on West Dudley Town Road, uh, two associated with. The industrial building, one, two, um, and a third associated with the contractor yard. There is a fourth curb cut on the south end of our site, um, over here, again, connecting to West Dudley Town Road. There are um a number of wetland pockets on the site. You can see those highlighted in green. Um, three of these wetlands are actually stormwater detention ponds associated with the lay-down space. Um. We plan to renovate and enhance those wetland spaces and use them as our uh stormwater facilities. And there is also a perennial water course on the north end of our site, of northeast end of our site. This next slide will show you um a few site photos of the existing condition of our site. Um, there is a photo location map to orient yourself on the right-hand corner of the screen. Um, the first photo here is a site overview, looking to the west. Um, the second photo, uh, again, is a site overview, looking to the south. Um, you know, you could see uh stockpiles, um, processing materials and storage of construction equipment. This next slide. Will show you. What's it loads? Um, generally more of the same, um, photo number three is looking northwest. Uh, as you can see, it's laid on space for construction equipment. Um, photo number four is along the western edge of the property, along West Dudley Town Road. Uh, just stockpiles of um act, uh, construction, uh, aggregate. Um, number five, um. Again, more uh laid on space of construction equipment. And again, the eastern side of the site in the last photo, uh, is it just another indication of the uh eastern edge of the site? So that gives a general summary of the existing conditions of the site. Um, and now I want to run through our proposed development. We are proposing a um five hundred twenty-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six square foot warehouse. That you could see central to the site here in white. Um, loading docks will be both on the east and west side of the building. Um, trailer spaces uh will be located. Trailer parking spaces will be located on the west side of the site, along West Dudley Down Road. Um, an additional trailer spaces on the east side of the site. We concentrated the majority of our trailer parking spaces in the rears, in the rear of the site, uh, to screen them from view. Um, there is employee parking on both the north. End of the building and the south end of the building, uh, totaling um three hundred and sixty-one car parking spaces. As I mentioned, there are a number of uh wetlands on site. Um, a few things that I want to point out, there is a uh wetland. Enhancement and recreation area, um, you can see here in white. Um, and on the east end of the site, there is a culvert. Um. That the stream runs through, uh, that was uh an old farm road. And through discussions with the Wetland Commission, we will be removing that and restoring. Um, restoring that wetland. Um, there'll be landscaping provided uh throughout the site. Um, as uh we've mentioned, uh, this development will stay within the limits of the existing limits of disturbance, so. Um, we will not be expanding. The limits of a product beyond what is already disturbed. Um, as far as landscaping goes, we've selected a a robust landscape design, all native drought tolerant species. Um, specifically, I wanted to point out, uh, we did spend a lot of time thinking about how we can screen. Um, our building, the loading docks, trailer spaces from Wesley, West Dudley Town Road. So we provided a a dense vegetated buffer along West Dudley Town Road. Um, I'll speak more to this in a few slides, but it's a roughly thirty-foot deep vegetated buffer. Um, just a quick summary of our landscaping. We are providing a hundred and twenty-six shade trees, um, eight ornamental trees. Eighty-seven uh evergreen trees, a hundred and six evergreen shrubs, a hundred and twenty-one deciduous shoves. And over six hundred uh ornamental grasses. This slide here focuses on the uh landscape buffer along West Dudley Town Road. Um, and our goal here was to screen the trailer parking and the loading docks from Wesley Dudley Town Road. Um, and what we did is we selected a um kind of a collection of different types of deciduous trees. Evergreen trees and evergreen shrubs, uh, they'll be a little more low-lying, so we have red maples, sour gums. American holly, white spruces, uh, mixed in with some evergreen shrubs, and it's a layered approach. Um, so we feel this will be attractive in all seasons, and uh addition to that, we'll provide a good buffer from our our loading area. Um. We did. Put some sections together to give people um a sense of what this will look like from West Dudley Town Road. Um, this is the south end of our site. Um. You know, again, a a thick, a buffer uh from a proposed loading space and trailer spaces. Um, another section showing kind of more of the same, uh, this is more central to the site. Um, again. One more section we put together at the north end of the site. So we feel it will provide, um, you know, a very attractive and robust buffer from um from visibility from West Dudley Town Road. From a stormwater perspective, we do have a very uh detailed and thorough stormwater design. Um, I'll just run through some of the high-level um features, water quality features that we are providing. Um, in green, we are providing two rain gardens. Um. In purple, we have three open bottom underground detention systems. Um, we have five water quality units in magenta, so the circles here are all um water quality units. We have three different detention basins. And um, these are at the location of the existing detention basins, but we will be renovating and enhancing those basins. Um, for our site, and we are also providing uh porous asphalt. At the perimeter of our employee parking scene here in orange. And as we mentioned, um, we are looking for a five separate special permit. Um. So I will run through those five requests briefly. And I just lost the lights. Um, so our first special permit request is for the use, uh, which is a warehouse. Um, the second is um relevant to our parking, so we are asking for a permanent thirty-five percent reduction in parking. Um, and based on. The zoning code, it doesn't specifically speak to um parking demand for a warehouse. It does speak to a parking requirement for an industrial use. Um, which gives you a really high part parking number, so that gives you over a thousand parking spots. Um, so based on the code, we figured the closest use was an industrial use. The requirement for that is one thousand forty-four, so we're asking for a thirty-five percent reduction from that. Which brings us down to six hundred and seventy-nine spaces. Um, that's still almost double uh what we need. From, so from there, we're requesting uh an additional reduction of sixteen point five or a hundred and twelve parking spaces be deferred. And this plan that you're looking at now is our deferred parking plan. So say in the future, um, those deferred parking spaces did need to be um incorporated. We do have a design that shows that it can work within our current um. Proposed development pavement limits. Um, so we are requesting a total of. Five hundred and sixty-one spaces to be installed uh in the proposed condition. And that's including a trailer and employee parking. The next special permit request is regarding a retaining wall exceeding four feet in height. We do have one retaining wall on site that exceeds that four feet in height. It's in the southeast corner of the site that you could see here in magenta. It is far from public view. It's roughly seven hundred feet from West Dudley Down Road. And the reason for this wall is that we were trying to reduce impacts to the existing wetlands on site. So you could see the wetlands here in green. We were trying to keep our distance from those wetlands. If we didn't have a wall, we'd be grading towards those wetlands and potentially increasing the impact. And you could see the existing tree line highlighted here in darker green. We tried to maintain the existing tree line throughout the entire site. So another intent of this wall is to avoid cutting down any unnecessary trees. And the third point is that, you know, to further reduce the size of this wall, we did notch out the corner of the building. So it's not a perfect square. There is a notch in this corner to, you know, stay away from the wetlands, stay away from that tree line and try to reduce the size of this wall. In front of my lighting perspective, we are providing full cutoff LED fixtures. They will be dark, dark sky compliant. An example of what the fixture would look like is here in the at the bottom left hand corner of the screen. Our special permit request, number five, is regarding light fixtures taller than fourteen feet. We are proposing light fixtures of twenty-four feet. And there are a few reasons for this. It reduces the quantity of light poles on site. This will reduce the the points of light on site. It'll give us more of a uniform distribution of light throughout the site. And the final reason is with trailers parked on site, they could be thirteen and a half feet tall. And if you have a light fixture of fourteen feet tall, you're going to get really long shadows over those trailers and potentially create an unsafe condition. So that was our fifth special permit regarding lighting. And with that, I was going to give it back to Brian Roslin to discuss some of our architecture.
Sure. Thank you very much, Dave. I'll put my architect hat on. So what you're seeing on screen right now is representative building elevation. So we do have an in-house architect. And we do have a pretty standard program in terms of color scheme and materials that we look to install across the country. So as you could see here, there is very earthy tones and what's more common, I would say, in the industrial space is more gray. We like to do brown because we feel like it is more earthy and natural and more attractive one, but also can blend into the existing environment better and doesn't stand out as much. That's also a reason for the undulating wall heights there too. So it's not just all one height. We are looking to have a maximum height of fifty-one feet with sixty feet being allowed by zoning. So we do have a buffer there between what we're proposing and what is allowed by zoning. And in terms of just materials, so we do concrete wall panels and their textured acrylic coating. We also have glass windows, you could see, and then also there's the loading dock doors, but also man doors that would comply with the fire code. Kick it back over.
All right, thank you, Brian. The next part of our presentation is going to focus on traffic. So I'll ask Scott F. Kiss to continue with the traffic.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Scott Hesketh. I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut. The firm of F. A. Hesketh and Associates. Our office is in East Granby, Connecticut. And I'm the author of the March first to twenty twenty-three Traffic Impact Report, which has been submitted for this application. You've heard the site plan explained to you and the overall roadway, the local area was described to you, but the sites as proposed is located at West Dudley Town Road. West Dudley Town Road originates at Connecticut Route one eighty-seven, extends southward and then makes a ninety degree turn and extends easterly back to Route one eighty-seven. West Dudley Town Road provides approximately twenty-two or twenty-three feet of pavement. It's straight for the W yellow center line. Roadways posted at thirty-five miles per hour, with the exception of the area of the ninety degree bend immediately south of the site. And the roadway serves primarily industrial uses. Route one eighty-seven, which is located north of the site, is a state maintained highway. It's a boulevard highway, providing two through lanes in each direction, west of West Dudley Town Road. And it's a four lane undivided highway, east of West Dudley Town Road. Digital turn lanes are provided at signalized intersections along that roadway. Traffic signals are provided on Route one eighty-seven at the Home Goods Pepperidge Farm driveway at West Dudley Town Road and Phoenix Crossing, at the Command Aircraft driveway and that Route three oh five and Old Windsor Road. Another local roadway in the area, Philly Street. Originates at West Dudley Town Road and extends in a southerly direction into the center of town. The roadway generally provides twenty-eight feet of pavement, the W yellow center line. It's posted at thirty-five miles per hour. The roadway serves mainly residential uses, with the exception of a couple of industrial uses located near the intersection of West Dudley Town Road. In the course of preparing our study, our office researched the files of the Connecticut Department of Transportation to determine if there's any existing traffic volumes in the area. The Department of Transportation maintains counts on all state highways and some local roadways typically on a three year cycle. Included in their database where traffic volume counts conducted during July two thousand nineteen on Route one eighty-seven. That roadway carries an average daily traffic volume of nineteen thousand seven hundred vehicles. Morning peak hour about seventeen hundred vehicles and an afternoon peak hour of about sixteen hundred vehicles. The DOT also had automated counts on West Dudley Town Road, again, conducted during July of two thousand nineteen. That roadway has an average daily traffic volume of about four thousand two hundred vehicles with peak hour volumes slightly under about four hundred and twenty-five vehicles an hour during both the morning and afternoon peaks. In addition, our office conducted manual turning movement counts at the intersection of Route one eighty-seven and West Dudley Town Road, Route one eighty-seven and Route three oh five. And also at West Dudley Town Road and Philly Street. And those counts were conducted during September of two thousand twenty-two. All of that data was used to prepare a representation of the background traffic volumes occurring in the area. In addition, we used a two percent per year growth rate to grow the traffic to a twenty twenty-four design year. A time when it is expected that if approved, this development will be open and ready for for use. In terms of the site generated traffic for the proposed development, we researched the Institute of Traffic Engineers Trip Generation Report. In that report, they have a land use code one fifty, which is a warehouse development. The IT trip generation allows us to estimate the traffic volumes for for these types of uses based on counts conducted at existing operating facilities throughout the country. Based on the size of this proposed facility, the ITE projects that we will have a total of nine hundred trips on a daily basis, four hundred and fifty entering and four hundred and fifty exiting movements. A morning peak hour of eighty-nine trips made up of sixty-nine entering and twenty exiting and an afternoon peak hour of ninety-five trips made up of twenty-seven entering and sixty-eight exiting movements. In addition, we're projecting a total truck volume of three hundred and sixteen trucks on a daily basis. And that three hundred and sixteen is included in the nine hundred trips previously discussed. We're also looking at morning and afternoon peak hour truck trips of eleven and sixteen trucks respectively. Our office distributed that traffic to the local roadway network and conducted capacity analyses at the three intersections previously mentioned. We analyzed both the background and combined traffic volume conditions. And the results of our analysis are presented in table five of our report. Summarize it for you. The signalized intersection of Route one eighty-seven and West Dudley Town Road operates at a level of service C. I'm sorry. Operates at a level service B during background, during the peak hours under background conditions. And upon completion of this development, if so approved, that intersection will continue to operate at a level of service B during the peak hours under the combined conditions. We're anticipating increases in average vehicular delay of between one and two seconds per vehicle on average. The signalized intersection to Route one eighty-seven with Route three oh five operates at a level service C during the morning and afternoon peak hours under the background conditions. Under the combined traffic volume conditions, it will operate at a level service C during the morning peak hour and will dip to a level service D during the afternoon peak hour with an additional delay of about four seconds per vehicle. We are suggesting to the Department of Transportation that a minor timing change at that location will return the intersection level service during the afternoon peak hour to a level service C. It will maintain a level of service C during the morning peak hour. And in fact, it will improve the overall average vehicular delays by up to four or five seconds per vehicle over background conditions during those time periods. We also looked at the intersections of West Dudley Town Road and Philly Street. All movements of that location operate at a level service A or B during the morning peak hour. Under the background conditions, we'll continue to do so under the combined traffic conditions during the afternoon peak hour. All movements operate at level service A or C during the background conditions. And we'll continue to do so during the under the combined traffic volume conditions. We also looked at the intersection of our site driveways with West Dudley Town Road. All the movements on West Dudley Town Road operate at level service A. And the site driveway approach operates either at level service A or B during peak hours with average vehicular delays between nine and ten seconds per vehicle. So except from exceptional levels of service at the intersection of our site driveways and the town roadways. In addition, we reviewed the available intersection site distances at the three proposed site driveways. It's our opinion that the site distances at all driveways meet the conduct minimum requirements for the posted speed limit. With the exception of the southerly driveway to West Dudley Town Road, looking in a southerly direction toward the curvature, there's a ninety degree curve in the roadway there. At thirty-five miles per hour, we do not meet the site distance. But as I indicated previously, that the posted speed limits in that location are twenty-five miles per hour. And it is difficult for a vehicle to, a vehicle to travel around that corner at anything higher than twenty-five miles per hour. But based on that twenty-five mile per hour speed limit, we're confident that we have enough intersection site distance or stopping site distance at the site driver location. This development, because of the square footage and because of the number of parking spaces which are being proposed, will require approval from the Office of the State Traffic Administration. As a major traffic generator, we have made an application to that office. We are waiting their initial review comments. But as indicated to you during the one of the previous public hearings, the Office of the State Traffic Administration will not grant approval until after local approvals have been obtained from this commission. But we do expect a favorable approval from them. And that'll probably be a month or two after, after the town has granted site plan, site plan approval. If if you decide to to move in that direction. At this time, I've, I'm completed with my remarks. I'm going to turn the microphone back over to Tom Cody to to complete our our presentation. And I'll be happy to address comments at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Scott, for that presentation. Again, this is Tom Cody. I just wanted to provide a few concluding remarks and summarize a few points. Dave Gagnon did a good job of of giving you the detail on the five requested special permits. I wanted to mention one additional point that you might be interested in. We included this in our statement. Project statement that we included with the application. But we did a little survey of zoning regulations of towns in this area. So for example, we looked at Windsor, Windsor Locks, South Windsor, Simsberry, Enfield and East Granby. And the purpose of the survey was to see how other towns in the area treat warehouse uses from a parking ratio standpoint. And what we found is that virtually all of the other towns that we looked at have a two, two categories for parking. One would be the general manufacturing ratio, but then they also have a second parking ratio for warehouse uses. And what you see in those regulations is that the warehouse parking ratio is generally much, much lower than a traditional manufacturing parking ratio. And this is really gets at what we are proposing in the two parking reduction special permits. To use a simple manufacturing ratio of one space per five hundred square feet of building area, you create a demand for over a thousand parking spaces at this site, which which greatly exceeds what a warehouse use would would generate. And I think the survey of the six other towns in the area would confirm that looking at this as a warehouse use should lead you to believe and agree with us that far less than a thousand parking spaces would be appropriate for this site. And I would note that if you were to approve the two special permits that we have proposed, the net parking ratio with those two special permit approvals would still put this project in a situation where somewhat more parking will be provided than the other six towns have in their regulations. So I point this out to give you some comfort that our request is in line with and consistent with other towns in the area and how they have addressed warehouse parking generation rates in their towns. So because we've applied for a special permit, five different parts of special permits, your regulations include special permit criteria, section nine point five E has those special permit criteria. And we have included in our application a statement of consistency with these criteria. And I'd like to just briefly touch on a couple of highlights of those. Now that you've heard the technical presentation from the team. The first criteria is to find whether the site is a suitable location for the proposed use. And in this case, the the use is the warehouse use. As Dave Gagnon pointed out, this site is zoned I two. All of the surrounding sites adjacent to this property are zoned I two. There is ready, direct and immediate access to State Route one eighty-seven. On the other side of one eighty-seven, of course, is Phoenix Crossing, where several warehouse and distribution type uses are are located. Those include Trader Joe's, the Niagara Bottling Home Goods Distribution and Pepperidge Farm, among others. The site has already been approved for development. And although that approval was not for a warehouse use, as this includes the material stockpiling use that the Butler Company received approval for led them to clear all of the area that we we need for this application. So we think that this is a very suitable and appropriate location for the proposed use. Residential impacts should be minimal because the immediate neighborhood is indeed all commercial and industrial uses. Your second criteria asks you to look at the proposed improvements and whether they're appropriate. On site, Brian Roslin described for you the building elevations and the attention to detail for some variance. Variations in height and the fenestration of the building. Warm colors, neutral colors. All of that. Promotes an appropriate and consistent building for the area. We have a landscaping plan with a very dense amount of vegetation along the western edge of the property. Along West Dudley Town Road to try to promote screening of the building and activity at the site. The third criteria relates to transportation analysis and conditions. You just heard from Scott Hesketh, who prepared a very detailed traffic impact report. The project will be reviewed and will need a state permit as Scott described. But he's also presented a very thorough report for you to understand. The kind of traffic volumes that are expected from the project and how those would affect area intersections happily. This project will have minimal impact on area intersections. And Scott has proposed a signal timing change to improve the functioning. Of the 187 and State Route 305 intersection, which we think would be a benefit for not only this project, but for the community as well. Adequate public utilities and services are available to the site. We have public water and sewer. With adequate capacity and all other utilities are readily available to the site, so that checks that box. The fifth criteria relates to environmental protection and conservation. We spent a lot of time preparing for and presenting to the inland wetlands commission. Our environmental consultant, our wetland consultant, spent a lot of time going through a plan. To include some mitigation. And enhancements to the existing wetland areas. Which the commission, Wetland Commission appreciated, and they approved that application unanimously. Your sixth criteria looks to the long term viability of the project. We would note that this site will be professionally maintained. Once it's built. The Wetlands Commission required as a condition of their approval, a three year maintenance and monitoring program. For the wetland mitigation areas. Stormwater management features will also be routinely inspected and cleaned. And we included a maintenance plan with the application. So we think that really does speak to and promote the long term viability of the project. Once it is developed. Finally. Your special permit criteria asks you to look at the plan of conservation and development. The P O C D has a significant economic development section. And specifically at page 66. The plan identifies industrial development as a continued growth objective. And it notes that Bloomfield has seen growth in warehousing and distribution. And corporate office facilities and should continue to pursue these types of industries. Other planning documents have recommended this type of growth. In the northeast portion of town, since residential uses are limited. Good transportation is present and similar types of development are located nearby. Think that's a great summary for what this site features and accomplishes with this project. So in conclusion. The project proposes a warehouse use with associated improvements. It's consistent with I two zoning. It has been designed to fit entirely within the areas that are already and have been disturbed. Pursuant to the approvals that the Butler Company had obtained. We've proposed a dense vegetated buffer along West Dudley Town Road. We think it's consistent with important P O C D goals. You've heard from our traffic consultant. And he has concluded that traffic volumes expected from the project can be readily accommodated by the existing roadway network. Not cause traffic congestion, they're not going to create unsafe traffic conditions. So in summary, we think the application is complete. It includes all of the information required by your regulations. It's consistent with all of your decisional criteria. We hope that you agree and will approve it. And our entire team is ready, willing, and able to answer any questions that you or the public may have.
Thank you very much, Attorney Cody. Jonathan.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that was a fairly complete presentation. As all of you know, this application has generated some public interest. And we have staff, Justin has sent you a fairly lengthy memorandum with the staff comments, which I will. I will summarize. And then have some additional comments. In response to some of the comments we've heard. To put the, you know, you know, it's it's obviously a large building with a lot of trucks. Simply put. But to put it in perspective, the for those who want to sort of relate it to other structures. This proposed warehouse is about three fifths the size of the Home Goods Warehouse on Blue Hills Avenue. Which is about almost 800,000 square feet. We think that. That in terms of the. Of the site, the special permits requested. I will briefly go through. Justin has laid them out fairly specifically in the detail in his memo. We think that the that the request for the parking special permits to reduce the parking. Are very appropriate and in our opinion actually enhance the property. And enhance the development by reducing the impervious coverage and and really putting. What would appear to be a lot of unnecessary parking at this time on the site and is permitted by the commission. So based on that, we would support that. We think the retaining wall is, as indicated, is in the rear of the property and will have very significant visual impact. And we would support that. We also agree with the comments on lighting that the that we would have lesser lights at a higher that actually create less. Light interference than would otherwise be if you had a great number of other lighting structures spread around the thing. We think that the. The traffic analysis from the from the traffic generation is is correct. And would support that part. And. And but as as many have mentioned. There's a big concern for West Dudley Town Road. And I would report to the commission. We have had conversations as late as today with the Director of Public Works. We all agree that West Dudley Town Road, while Scott has said it can handle the traffic is is in very poor condition and has very poor drainage. From Philly Street West and North. And the Director of Public Works has indicated to us that he has. Funding available to commence the design. Of the reconstruction of West Dudley Town Road from Philly Street West and North. Its entire length in this coming fiscal year. That was underway prior to this application being presented to the town. We were already looking at the road and getting ready to redo it. So but that is in the works, and if the design is completed next year and we can. Find sufficient funding, construction would then commence in in FY 2025. Fiscally in calendar year 24. We do have concerns about Philly Street and the generation of traffic. While signage and and other things can be. Can be done to try and restrict truck traffic on Philly Street. We all know the impact of GPS. And its ability to send vehicles, particularly trucks on roads that we don't want them on. I experienced that on the road that I live on in town. But we are working with the applicant and work with the applicant to try and ensure, one, that the. That the southerly entrance be for automobiles only. And not be for truck traffic so that they would and that all truck traffic would would enter and exit to the west on West Dudley Town Road in that portion. And then it would be so designed that it would basically guide vehicles when their eggs getting to go north. And also guide them to come in from the north as opposed from another direction. We also. Have discussed with the with the applicant and they assured that this that this will be the case, that there be no. Overflow parking or waiting parking of trucks on West Dudley Town Road at any time. As we know occurs on some of the other streets around some of our our industrial properties. They believe they have more than sufficient space on site. To stack trucks waiting for either departure or arrival. And they have assured us that that will that will be the case. In terms of the bulk of the building, it meets all of the requirements. It's within the parameters. Of the zoning regulations in terms of of height. Other than the first, the the height that they're asking for in the one section. But it meets the setbacks. It meets the the impervious coverage requirements. And all the other bulk requirements. We believe that they basically, as indicated, satisfy the requirements of the special permit. Requirements in the in the ordinance regulations. We have set forth in the memorandum and I would unless you want me to go through them in detail. All of the conditions that we would recommend. For which are some basically fairly standard in terms of. What to be met before the signing of the plans, what to be met before the issuance of permits. Conditions to be met on the issuance of the certificate of compliance. And general conditions. We think with all those conditions. Based on that, staff would would support this application. A couple other notes. I mean, there's been some comments about. That have come in from the public that we certainly welcome. But we would respectfully disagree there. As far as we can tell, there's not one tree that's going to be cut down on this site that hasn't already been cut down. And removed. And then actually, when all is said and done, there'll be more trees on the site with the landscaping than presently exist. And I think that pretty much covers where the staff is. We're certainly welcome to answer questions, any part of our report. But we think on balance, while it is a significant development, it satisfies the conditions of the regulations. And would be an improvement to the site and to the neighborhood.
Hey, thank you very much, Jonathan. At this time, will entertain any questions from the audience?
I will. I will allow a few, a couple of attendees to to speak. There are one, two, three, four so far. I will now. Karen Sprout, who had a question. Karen.
Am I okay to go?
Yes.
And yes, my question does relate to traffic on Philly Street. Where I've lived for 37 years and recognize that it will, you know, certainly has a state of rural road. There's been a great deal of truck traffic that isn't that is on the road now, but it is not semi tractor trailer truck traffic. And so my question is, are there any considerations? Thank you, Mr. Coleman, for mentioning what you're hoping to achieve with the applicant. But could you explain a little bit more about traffic restrictions, specifically tractor trailers on Philly Street?
Thank you for your question. We 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 have not as yet from our from the planning staff, but it is our intent to pursue. Whether we can have installed. Truck traffic restrictions on Philly Street. As we all know that they're sometimes difficult to enforce, but at least we can get them up there to get the message out. To to try and reduce as much as we can truck traffic. I will not, I cannot guarantee you. That there will not be a semi trailer on that road at some point, particularly the the independents. Are particularly difficult to to control. If, in fact, the warehouse has a single occupancy, I think we have a much better opportunity to control truck traffic. Not only around the site, but coming to and from the site. But we will pursue all alternatives that we can to to try and protect the integrity of Philly Street as it is now. Staff has been from the beginning, believe that that is one of the most significant issues that we have to to mitigate. If this application is approved.
And and how about a no semi trailer regulation like there is currently on Woodland?
That's what we would try and pursue.
Thank you. That would be very important. That would be devastating for Philly Street.
I do not disagree.
Are there time for comments now or is it just questions now?
Mr. Chairman, do you want?
Yes, right, right now, right now, it's just a question.
Okay, I will. I'm going to allow Ms. Sprout, if you're all set, there are other members of the public that would like to speak. Are you all set with questions?
I want to make, I have a comment, but I understand if it's only questions now, I'll refrain from the comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. I now have Valerie Rosetti. Ms. Rosetti, you may speak.
Yes, hello. A couple of questions. Thank you for the presentation, very detailed. I appreciate some of the. Lengths you've gone to to make it environmentally friendly. I think the big question for me. Too is like, who is the warehouse? What business is actually going to be conducted there? I think as a town, we've had some experience with with warehouses that have been built without. Knowledge of what the ultimate use is. The other is I'm very concerned about. Two things. Is there an estimate of the cost of the road deterioration yearly due to all this truck traffic? It seems like according to the figures you quoted, 900 trucks a day if they were operating. 12 hours a day, that's 75 minutes, that's a truck, you know, more than every second. And is there an estimate of the greenhouse gases that are going to be increased in town emitted from the. Usage of this facility since our town just passed. A climate emergency resolution that's dedicated to increasing greenhouse gases emitted in the town.
And I'll let the developer answer that. On the road question, we. The Director of Public Works believes that the the existing road will not suffer. Any serious further denigration from the proposed traffic. And certainly the reconstruction of the road when completed. Will be at a standard that is more than adequate to handle the proposed truck traffic and other traffic that would be on the road.
Well, could I read? Could I read a quote from a federal study that a fully loaded tractor trailer weighs 80,000 pounds, 20 times more than a typical car? But the wear and tear caused by truck is exponentially greater. One analysis contends that freight hauling trucks cause 99% of the wear and tear on roads. But only pay for 35% of the maintenance. So I think we've seen some of the town roads that are heavily used by truck traffic being deteriorated. And as a taxpayer, then we're paying to repave them. And I, as detailed as your presentation is, it would be really good to know what the actual. Cost to the town is for the increased truck traffic that's going to be that we're inviting into the town. Not to mention all the pollution and the greenhouse gas emissions. So thank you, but that would be a figure that. Uh, that we're inviting into the town, not to mention all the pollution and the greenhouse gas emissions, so thank you, but that would be a figure that. I, I don't believe your statement is really factually correct that that much truck traffic is not going to. Repair roads, especially one which we're gonna pay a lot of money to repave.
Well, I, I would not disagree with you that there's not going to be an impact, I think that. Public Works Director felt that. At, you know, the, the road's gonna be rebuilt, and it will be rebuilt to a standard that. Uh, presumably will have a life cycle. Um. Related to the traffic that's gonna be on it. But, but your point is well put, and um. If we can get some detailed answers from the Director of Public Works on our side, we will certainly attempt to do that.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, if I could just ask a question, this is Tom Cody. Do you want us to answer? There were, there was a part or two of, of Ms. Ms. Rosetti's question that I don't.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, feel free to answer.
Okay, thank you, um. I'm gonna, the, the number was cited about nine hundred trucks per day. Um, Scott Hesketh, could you just summarize? That the anticipated truck. Traffic that you found in your report.
Right, uh, based on the I T E, the Institute of Transportation Engineers. We're projecting a total of nine hundred trips, which is all kinds of trips, passenger car vehicles. Uh, trucks, small vans. Um, and the like. Of that nine hundred, we're projecting three hundred and sixteen truck trips. So it's about one third of the total would be truck trips, and two thirds of the total would be passenger car trips. And that was, that was what we had presented based on the, based on the I T data.
Thank you for that, um, the other part of the question. That we'd like to address is um a question that. Has come up in a couple of the letters that we read, you know. Is the tenant of this. Facility known at this time? And, and the answer is no, um, we don't know the tenant or tenants. And I would say that that is typical. For projects of this type and, and, and I think even many other types of development. A, a typical tenant that would get interested in a, in a facility like this or a project like this. Is not going to really engage the developer in serious discussions. Until they have an approval in hand. So once, if the commission decides to approve this, once North Point has an approval in hand. Um, then it would be able to enter into more serious discussions with potential occupants of the facility. Um, so that is pretty typical, um, not only for industrial development, but, but really many types of commercial development. As well, and really. I guess, what, what would be important for the commission to think through is that. Knowing the identity of the tenant, the specific name of the tenant is not really as important. As knowing that the use that is being proposed is a storage warehouse use. And that use is a part of the permit request that we've made. And so if the commission approves it, this North Point can only. Have a tenant which fits the storage warehouse category, it can't be a different type of. Use, it can't be a truck terminal, for example, that's a different type of use. We've proposed a storage warehouse. And so the identity of the specific tenant should not be as much of a, of an issue. It's the use that the commission is looking at, so thank you for that.
Thank you for clarifying that. Uh, Linda, is there any other?
Yes, I will now. Allow for Ms. Tricia Forster to speak.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I have a few questions, bear with me, I took a lot of notes. Um, I'm one of the more close neighbors, um, so this is. Very impactful for me on Philly Street. Um, I have a question um for Mr. Hesketh. I, I was a little confused by the intersections he checked, one eighty seven and West Dudley, I understand, West Dudley and Philly, I understand. He said West Dudley and three oh five. Is he talking all the way at the end, are you talking where West Dudley meets Old Windsor Road? Uh, I'm not sure where that intersection was.
Scott, can you, can you incident?
As we look at the signalized intersection of Route one eighty seven and Route three oh five.
Okay, so it wasn't West Dudley, it was one eighty seven.
We did not look at the other end of uh Old Windsor Road, that's correct.
Okay. Um. So, okay, I guess that's a comment, so we'll save that for after.
Thank you.
Trying. Um, question about the wetlands, you said that wetlands required a three-year maintenance plan for the wetlands. Um, that was a little confusing. So after three years, there's no required maintenance, I, I, I guess I don't understand that.
Mr. Chairman, I can answer that if you'd like.
Please do, thank you.
Cody, the applicant. Um, the three-year monitoring and maintenance. Um, requirement was principally. Directed at the wetland creation. Areas. And. The commission felt that it was important, and the, and the applicant completely agreed. That we should monitor. Um, the creation areas to make sure that they succeed. And there was success criteria built into the proposal and the approval. So if any portion of that didn't thrive the way it was supposed to, we would continue to add the plant material. And take the steps to make sure that the wetland creation. Area succeeded. And so the three years was believed to be an appropriate amount of time. Um, for that to succeed. Aside from that, though, we have a maintenance plan with the application that talks about general maintenance of the site. That would go on forever. Um, cleaning out catch basins, cleaning out detention basins, cleaning out um stormwater quality measures is a standard. Part of our maintenance plan, which we've included in the application.
Okay, and that um. Where you're redoing the wetlands is where that farm road was, it was in that northeast corner of the lot. Is that where you're rebuilding the wetlands?
Um, actually, it's not. Uh, in that area, we agreed to remove a crossing. The wetland creation areas are. Further south on the site.
Okay. Um, another question that I have is. Um, regarding employees and traffic, et cetera, that's gonna be with them. Um. Are there plans for sidewalks along West Dudley Town for um employees to get back and forth to. A bus if it's on one eighty seven, is there a plan for bussing into the site um? With Home Goods, that was, I mean, we've had, we had multiple problems with Home Goods when that went in, one, they had. They were standing out in the all-weather on one eighty seven or crossing one eighty seven for a bus. Um. When it's, when shift change occurs, it's just a nightmare, people actually plan their trips to not be on one eighty seven during shift change. Because it's, they just don't even slow down pulling out of that parking lot. Um, so I get, that was another question I had, whether that thought has been involved in the redevelopment and design of West Dudley Town. Is sidewalks and safety for the employees.
Um, John Coleman, in the planning office. We um, I think the design has, has not yet commenced. Uh, but that certainly will be obviously taken into consideration, I. Um, there are lots of new um. Desire, not more, the standards and um. And items that are taken into consideration in terms of designs of um. Of town roads now than were before. Uh, we will certainly uh bring that up with the Director of Public Works, but. I, I can't tell you one way or another whether that, that has not. I can say that it has not been considered yet because the design has not started. And I can tell you that we will request that when the design is commenced, that uh those considerations are taken into place.
Okay, and how about for the developer, has there been? Any plan for um. How employers are getting, employees are getting in and out of work? I know Home Goods, Amazon, all those rely on a lot of people who don't necessarily have cars. Amazon has a bus stop right in front of their building, Home Goods, it's out on the street. Um, I'm not sure which one it is.
Uh, Mister Chairman, if I could.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Ms. Forster, for your, for your question, um, so at this time. Without knowing a tenant, we don't have any plans other than what we're providing on site for car parking. Um, that being said, we'd be willing to work with staff once a tenant's understood. Um, and sometimes tenants come in and have those same desires as well for their employees, so we'd be looking to, to be able to have um. Accommodating their needs uh for their employees, but at the time. Uh, for this application, we are proposing what we believe is an adequate amount of employee uh vehicular parking spaces. Um, for a size of development of this size. And, and to, to Mr. Coleman's point earlier, you know, we, we wanna make sure we're keeping an open line of comment or uh conversation. In terms of the planning of West Dudley Town Road, and if there could be any synergies there with anything such as a planned sidewalk um or bus stop.
This is Scott Hesketh, for the record, there is a, a bus stop. Um, at the intersection of Route one eighty seven and West Dudley Town Road. Um, but uh, so there, that already exists, if there was a large number of employees. That happened to work at this particular facility. Um, the bus company might consider uh making a detour. Uh, and, and come down the roadway into the facility, but they would have to see a demonstrated need. And we would not know that until sometime in the future. Um, the applicant is not proposing uh to construct sidewalks uh. All the way up to Route one eighty seven, uh, we don't have the right to do so across other people's frontages uh. Um, but uh. You know, we will uh, we will work toward the, those types of goals in the future if uh, if a need is uh. Presented, and if uh the bus company will uh, will listen to it.
Thank you. Okay, um, so just, just a follow-up, that's quite a long way. For employees to have to go to this building if the closest bus stop is one eighty seven. Um, which is the concern of how far off it is of one eighty seven, you know, it's not on a major road, it's off on a. Side, very small side road. Um, my last question. And this has to go to the projected trips, I'm assuming that this is just an average for. Um. That was given three hundred and sixteen trucks as an average for. Um, buildings the size, warehouses the size, but. Assume that it, for depending on the tenant, it could be a lot more, could be a lot less, but it could be a lot more depending on what they're moving. Is that a pretty reasonable assumption?
The I T generations are, are averages, I, I don't know what the um. Or uh, the uh. Uh, the R factor is for this particular use, I don't have that uh handy, but yes, they're, they're averages uh based on counts of existing facilities, that's correct.
Okay, so, okay, so it could be more than the number given, okay, that's my questions that I can think of right now.
Thank you. Linda?
Yes, thank you, I will now promote. Uh, Mr. Robert Dickinson. One moment. All right, you're on.
Okay, yes, I, I have uh the concerns for pedestrians and bicyclists getting, getting to the site of this warehouse. And uh, with the additional tra- traffic, it's gonna be that much. More dangerous for people trying to, trying to get there, and I really think that the, at, at the time of this construction, that uh. A multi-use path be put in uh, to get, to give access. Uh, both, both to provide that safety, also with compliance to the town's complete street ord- ordinance. Our second question I have is solar planned for this warehouse? Yeah, that's it.
Any, any of you guys, okay, Brian?
I'm, I'm sorry, Mister Chairman, and Mister Dickinson, could you repeat your last question, I didn't understand the word.
Oh, the, the second was, uh, is solar planned for this warehouse, solar panels on the roof?
Oh, solar, yeah, that, that's an excellent question, Mister Dickinson, and um, something that I neglected to mention, um, as part of uh our. Um, desire to, to be more friendly to the environment, we do build all of our warehouses solar-ready. Um, you know, I will admit, in certain regions, it doesn't always make sense to have solar, but we feel that in the New England region and up in this area. Um, it could definitely make sense to have solar, and we do our structural designs to accommodate that. Um, so we would look to uh work with staff, and we understand there's a separate permitting procedure. Um, at Bloomfield um to get rooftop solar approved, and we would look to pursue that if appropriate.
Yeah.
I would ask on the uh, on the road reconstruction. If a wide sidewalk or multi-use path will be uh considered, uh, considered as part of that reconstruction project. Uh, usually the complete streets ordinances uh, uh, prom- promote, promote that, that construction.
You're absolutely correct, the complete streets um does promote that. And um, I cannot um. Affirmatively tell to you at this point that it will be there, but I can also, but I can also say to you that we will. Certainly have that conversation with the Director of Public Works as they move into design, and I think that of. If um, from both a um. A um, available um. Right-of-way and um, and other considerations, I, I would think that they would certainly strongly consider it, but I can't. I can't commit one way or the other at this time on their behalf because. It is their responsibility, but I can tell you the complete streets is um. Is, is, is a priority of, of both planning and engineering, uh, and the Public Works Department in this, in this community.
Uh, just another comment, I'm sorry, but uh, I just.
Is this a question, is this a question or a comment?
Yeah, right, uh, it's a question, I, is there any intent of having uh. Uh, regulations in our, in our, uh, in our town. Uh, to, to accomplish what Windsor has accomplished in, in, in putting uh. Uh, side paths on their industrial road.
It'll certainly be considered, um, we do have complete street regulations in town, as you know, uh, which can accomplish the same. The same um. Uh, objective, um, but certainly we will um. We are, you know, in, in many cases, in Windsor's case, they were able to be constructing brand-new roads that didn't exist before and had the opportunity to do that. We are really rebuilding. Uh, existing roads within existing right-of-ways, which sometimes has some, some significant limitations, but I, we hear your. We hear your question, and uh, it'll certainly be one of the considerations um. As we move forward on the um, on the design solutions for West Dudley.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. I will now promote Mister Mark Rubenstein. Mister Rubenstein.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. All right, well, I certainly am in favor of uh progress. And the idea of um, there being uh jobs for people. And um. Taxes for the town, I think that's all just great. But my concern is uh. But my concern is uh traffic flow. Um, it would seem to me, correct me if I'm wrong, that the vast and overwhelming majority of trucks coming and going would be coming off of 91. Does that make sense? I don't know, Scott? Want to address that? Hello?
Yeah. What's not typically have a back and forth? But uh, yeah, I would expect that most of the trucks would be coming from 91.
Yes, yeah, I would think that would make sense. Um, and of of the exits, which one do you think is most likely uh that the trucks will come off of? Have you thought about that?
I would expect the two most likely. Route 218.
Okay, I'm I'm talking about uh exit numbers off of 91. It would seem to me like it would be exit 36. Does that seem reasonable?
I believe that's Route 305.
Mr. Chairman would. We're getting a lot of feedback.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Linda, is there anything you can do about that?
I'm not sure.
Maybe Mr..
What would you like me to do?
Linda, you 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 muted.
Um, I think this is coming from Rubenstein. Um, more speaker.
Okay, let's see, how how can I do that? Hold on a moment. Okay, oh, I see that.
I'm gonna try this.
There, how's that? Is that better?
Is that better, everyone?
Well, we can still hear an echo with you. Yeah, there's still an echo.
Damn.
I I would suggest we allow Mr. Rubenstein to ask his questions, and then he can turn off his microphone, and we can answer them.
Alright, that sounds great. Yeah, it would seem to me that almost all the traffic would come on exit 36, whether it's coming from New York and up um, New Haven and up 91. Uh, or even if it was coming from eastern Massachusetts. Uh, it would get, they would get off uh, you know, on the Mass Pike and then down 84, get off on 291, head up uh one exit to exit 36. All the traffic, I kind of imagine will be on East Winton Berry Road. And if in the course of eight, an eight-hour day, you know, eight, eight in the morning till five at night, that's about a tractor-trailer, uh, you know, if you're talking about 316 of them, that's about a tractor-trailer passing by my street every minute and a half. That's just horrible. That will destroy the beautiful suburban environment of Bloomfield between exit 36 and heading up to Blue Hills.
Wouldn't it be exit 37?
Should I mute this? Wait, I'm sorry, what was your question?
Yeah, I was gonna say, wouldn't they get off on 37 and not 36 going down to West Dudley?
Mr. Chairman, that's what Mr. Hesketh's statement was. Uh, Mr. Hesketh didn't describe it with an exit number, but his answer to the question that was asked of him was exit 37 and exit 36. And exit 37 through 305 gives you the straightest shot to the project site. East Winton Berry Road is far more circuitous and out of the way than exit 37.
I would concur with that assessment. I would think Route 305 would be the the main route.
Okay, Mr. Rubenstein, you asked your questions. Um, I will now allow for another individual to uh to join in. Thank you. We now have uh Ms. Paula Jones.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Great, thank you. Um, I have, I think, just two questions. Um, the first just pertains to the choice of wording that was used by the applicants. Um, the 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 word, the phrase was was um existing limits of disturbance. Um, the fact that the project footprint was no greater than the existing limits of disturbance. Um, I guess my question is if you're looking at the current site where you've got um stockpiling going on, but you've got gravel millings, um, just piles of material versus a 500,000-plus square foot warehouse um with parking, um isn't there a big difference in terms of the amount of impervious surface that you're talking about? I I guess I was I was, I I was taken by that choice of words, you know, existing limits of disturbance, given what's there now versus what is proposed for this project. That's my first question, and would you like me to ask the second question?
Oh, is, okay. Is there someone there that's gonna answer the first one? Or do you want to hear both and then answer both?
If we could hear both, please.
Sure, sure, okay. The se- the second question is, um unfortunately, I missed the uh notice of the wetlands hearing. That was on me um because I would have attended. Um, and I noted that there were um by the NDDB, there were three species, state-listed species on the property. And um, I guess, you know, there's been a lot of attention paid to wetlands, but not you know, or discussion about the wetlands and but not a lot about the upland review area, which these animals, I think, are dependent on. So I guess I'm trying to understand the impact of this project um from a conservation um perspective. You know, one of the criteria regarding special permits is about environmental protection and conservation. And one of the things is kind of the environmental and conservation values of the parcel. So I guess I'd like that to be addressed, or that's my question. Yeah, are are those, are those things being addressed?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, this is Tom Cody. I'll I'll answer the second question that I'm going to ask Dave Gagnon after that to pull up a a a plan for the site to a- address the first question. But as to the second question, um, the regulation of state-listed species threatened, endangered and and species of special concern, that is under the jurisdiction of the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. And specifically, they administer a a database called the Natural Diversity Database. We sub- we sent, the applicant's team sent Connecticut DEEP copies of the application and asked for comment. And the response, we did get a response letter from DEEP um noting the presence in the area, not specifically on the site, but in the area of three species, and they recommended certain construction practices to mitigate any impacts to such species. And we have agreed to that. And what will happen next is that if the commission approves the application, we will have to apply to Connecticut DEEP for a stormwater general permit. And as a part of that process, Connecticut DEEP will review again any threatened endangered species of special concern issues. So they will see at that point specifically what measures we're proposing relative to construction to address their comments. So I think this issue has been um already handled uh by the agency that really has control and jurisdiction over that, which is Connecticut DEEP. Um, I'd like to ask Dave Gagnon, if he would, to to just show a copy of the plan and/or the aerial photo to explain what we mean when we say that this project will not exceed the existing limits of disturbance at the site.
Sure, thank you, Tom. Uh, Dave Gagnon with Lang and Engineering. Just bear with me while I uh pull up the map. Yep, thank you for your question, and um I think I could, before I get on to the question regarding our limited disturbance, um, I think I could add a couple things to uh the second question regarding the upload review. Um, in addition to the measures that um Tom mentioned, we're also uh increasing the vegetated buffer. So within that upload review, we're actually adding green space versus what is there now. Um, so we're adding habitat for the species, we're adding additional trees, and we're also adding um native grassland habitat uh in the rear of the site, which currently does not exist. So those are two additional features that we're um adding from an environmental perspective. Um, and regarding your question on um, you know, our proposed development and you know, we said this a few times throughout the presentation, but one of the goals of our project was to limit our um, limit our construction, limit our uh limit of um, you know, paving, planting, anything to uh within the current limits. So you could see now it's an active construction stockyard. We are gonna remove um all this material, our building, our pavement, um, all our permanent construction features are gonna be within the area that is currently disturbed. Um, and as far as a pervious, impervious count, uh, we are currently at, our proposed development is at 50% um impervious. Um, and we did, as I mentioned, add a robust stormwater design to make sure any runoff from the site is uh matching the existing historical conditions and is um you know, beneficial from water quality perspective, so. That's all I have.
Hey Paula, are you?
Yep.
Did you have anything else?
That's it for now, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Alright, yeah, next. Here with me, just a quick second. We have Gail Riley.
Uh, good evening. Um, I have a question um more for the developer, I guess, or for um Mr. Coleman. So when a development is being built, like this warehouse, and the road impact is gonna be affected, like is it solely up to the town to do the improvement on the roads? The developer or Northland in this case isn't responsible for any monies to repair the road or make the road viable for the type of construction? You know, for the tractor-trailers, it's always up to the town, so you could have a a huge warehouse building like this built, but and get approved for that, but if the roads need to be repaired in order to support the traffic, it's up to the town? That's my question. Thank you.
That's a great question. Um, unlike a subdivision where we can um require the developer to install um both public utilities and and um roads uh at their expense to town specifications. Uh, to the best of my knowledge, we do not have the opportunity in our zoning regulations uh to have that kind of negotiation, um except in some particular large site plan developments uh with the developer. Um, some communities do that, but to the best of my knowledge, um and and I could be mistaken, but um we do not have that that av- that advantage here in in Bloomfield at this time. Not something we certainly shouldn't look at, and um a very worthy um question and and one that crossed my mind right away, but I I don't think we have the authority at this point for this particular type of development.
You mute it, Linda.
Mr. Kevin Go or Bush? I apologize if I mispronounced your name.
That's a Uh, can you hear me? It's Kevin. Yeah, Kevin, Kevin Goff, I Bear Ridge Drive. Um, so I have a number of questions, uh, but I do have a follow-up for the question Paula Jones asked, because um we now know that the development will be 50% impervious. What is it currently?
Yeah, I could I could answer that question. Um, so we we conservatively, we considered uh the gravel, the stockpiles, um all the storage material as um pervious material. Um, there is a, you know, smaller industrial building with some pavement, so the existing percentage is relatively small if you consider um all the 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 process and the gravel and the stockyard as um impervious.
So what's number would you say right now is per in impervious surface?
I I don't have a specific number uh at hand.
So 5%, is that fair?
I I wouldn't like to speculate, but it's it's a small percentage of the site.
So 5% to 50, that's what you're talking about?
We are proposing 50%, that's correct.
Right, and you're going from something now that has essentially no impervious surface.
That that's not what he said.
Okay, what is the current percentage?
He doesn't know.
But he says it's minimal.
Right, but he didn't.
So give 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 me an order of magnitude, that's all I'm asking for.
He didn't put a number on it.
I uh, well, I would ask respectfully that the the commission should require the amount of change from impervious surface. So it's it's relatively small now, and it's going to 50%, is that correct?
Yeah, I would, oh, yeah.
Okay, um, let's see, I I want to go through, I I, one of my questions was answered, I think, by the uh uh, the assistant planner. Uh, so my understanding is that this, in fact, will not be a net loss of trees. This could actually be an increase because of all the buffers you've uh, you're you're putting in, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, um, to the question of the averages used for the truck traffic and so forth, um, I want to tie that to the tenant question. Um, what we have, what was presented was a very specific number of parking spaces, percentage reductions, amount of parking spaces determined. Um, how do we have any faith or um you know, um belief in any of those numbers if we don't know who the tenant is or what's gonna go on here? I mean, I I guess I'm curious as to why you would be building a facility with a certain number of parking spaces if we don't even know how many employees there are gonna be, what's gonna be going on in them? Can you give some idea of where you got these estimates?
Sure, um, that's a good question. Um, I'll give part of the answer, and then I'm gonna ask Brian Roslin to to maybe add on to that. Um, first off, again, this proposal is for a storage warehouse use. And there are general rules of thumb for the amount of parking that such a use would generate. And as we noted in our application, and as I mentioned before, six other towns in the area have parking ratios which are much less for storage warehouse uses than For storage warehouse uses than manufacturing uses. Our proposal, even including the proposed reductions, still provides more parking. Than virtually all of the other towns in the area would require. Under their warehousing parking ratio. So in that regard, we think that we've. Provided more than enough. But let me ask Brian to speak to this because, as Brian said at the beginning, Northland has, North Point has considerable experience. With similar facilities, and I think he can speak to that.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. And it is a great question and a question that we do here all the time. And I think the benefit of being a developer with. Holding over one hundred and forty million square feet of similar development is that we have a wide portfolio that we can analyze ourselves. That comes down to traffic, but also in terms of parking requirements. And what we're proposing here is in line with, I would say, over ninety percent of our portfolio and the tenants we would typically attract to a facility like this. So we feel pretty comfortable that what we're requiring here, which is again, a reduction of what would be required by zoning. Is appropriate for the warehouse use. And would accommodate the majority of the tenants that we would look to have in a building such as this.
Great, thank you. I want to go to the a couple of things on the traffic report. But I guess I would ask a question to the commission. Have they, I think at this point they're accepting the traffic report from the developer. I believe that the commission, you know, considering the lot of the concerns that have been voiced are with traffic. Traffic issues, and I think that's appropriate. Is the, I will ask the commission, have they considered having an independent traffic report done? Having the town's traffic report, because I believe you have the ability to do that. I don't know if the assistant planner wants to address that or.
We have, as far as I know. Kevin, we have not had that conversation. And. My recollection over the many years, in most cases, the town has not. It has relied on the. On the applicant's traffic report. I can certainly discuss that with. With the town planner tomorrow. So I can't give you a definitive answer on that, but by and large, my recollection is the town has not over. Many years with many, many large developments taking that approach.
Great. Thank you. Going back to the signaling information, I did want to ask the question, I guess that there was concern, there was a comment about. Degradation of the Route one eighty seven, three oh five intersection that it would go from a. It would actually decrease to a level D in the late afternoon, but the Mr. Hesketh made the comment that. You could potentially. You know, suggest a timing change that would improve that. I guess my question, my question is. If we, would that timing change improve the intersection regardless of what happens here? In other words. Could that timing change go in and simply improve the performance of that intersection and we could? You know, potentially not have the development, but put the timing change in and improve the, improve the viability of that intersection. So. Does that, does that change? Does that change simply improve the, the intersection or is it dependent upon this develop?
This is Mr. Hesketh, the timing change would improve the background conditions would improve. The combined conditions would improve all conditions. Yes, a timing change at that location is probably appropriate whether or not this development is approved.
Great, thanks. Let's see. I guess, well, I would like to mention, I would like to mention two things, Mr. Dickinson's questions and ask sort of follow up questions. On the solar, I understand the building will be solar ready, but why not? Solar active, I guess I'm, I was a little confused as to why we're doing one, but not, you know, why you would potentially be doing one, but not the other.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So the reason for that, and it's a great question, is that without a tenant known. We wouldn't know exactly the mechanical equipment and the air handling units to heat and cool the building, which would drive the rooftop design. So while we will design the structural integrity of the building to support weights. Associated conservatively with air handlers and mechanical equipment as well as being solar ready. In order to move forward with an application with specific locations and electrical design for solar. We would really have to understand some of the other hindrances on the rooftops, such as the HVAC and air handling equipment. Which is driven by the tenant.
Yeah, no, that that makes sense. So essentially. In terms of what you want to build, you would just at this point be building a shell. I mean, so you wouldn't even put in the HVAC in or. Do you partition interiors? So do you just build the sort of shell and wait to see who comes along?
Sure. Excellent question as well. So we do typically would look forward to moving or look. To move forward, building a shell. So that's an excellent industry term. And as, as Mr. Cody had mentioned earlier. You know, sometimes we do start negotiations with a potential tenant after approvals. Sometimes it's not until construction starts. And we've had success with similar developments and starting construction. In a shell environment and then through construction, having a tenant come in and understanding if any modifications are required. We would walk through that with staff. To understand those and that includes with the building department and any plans that we filed through the building department.
Great. Thank you. I think that Mr. Dickinson also asked about the complete streets and I was, I was actually involved when the town passed. The completely, both when it started the studies. To create a complete street policy and passing that complete streets policy. And I would say, and I guess this is a question for the assistant planner, that. You know, the idea that the complete streets not only would be what the town does, but it would be a requirement. Any developer or people that came in wanting to develop residential, commercial, whatever. Would need to look at that complete streets plan and. Adapt to that. One of the things we heard earlier was the comments about bus stops. And I know that was talked about a lot in the complete streets plan because it's not just multi-use trails and bicycle trails. But it's the ability of people who are pedestrians or to use public transportation to also access the roadways. So I guess my question is, will there be more? You know, whether, whether, whether the commission votes denied or whether it goes back, will there be more discussion about? You know, whether, whether this is, hearing is. Kept open and more comments come from the developer. Would there be more discussion with how a complete streets would be integrated into this proposal?
Certainly, Kevin, as we move forward, I would assume there would be. They've already indicated that. They will work with us on the, on the drainage when that is designed and any, any. Adaptability they need to do on their property to coordinate with whatever drainage system is proposed for the road. And I think that based on my conversations. With the developers representatives, I think there's a willingness to have those kinds of conversations. With the town going forward in terms of. The design of the street and the implementation of. Complete street application on, on the redesigned street.
Great, thank you. Final question. This goes to the comment that Mr. Cody made about. You know, looking at the different, well, I actually, I'm sorry, I have two questions before I get to that. I did want to go back to a minute to this storage warehouse definition. Because I think this whole question of who the tenant is, is obviously important. If you know the history, we had a proposal go through and it was for a very environmentally unsound enterprise. But it was billed as a warehouse. It was, it was not billed as what it was. So what is the definition of a storage warehouse as opposed to manufacturing warehouse as opposed, I mean, what are, what are the definitional categories? And what is allowed in a storage warehouse that's not allowed in something else?
I can, Mr. Chairman, if you, if I may. So I would say in general terms, a storage warehouse is for. Storage of dry goods and products. Now that could go from anything that you could potentially buy online. It could be a specific, let's say, we work with, you know, Home Depots or Lowe's and building products. But it's generally a facility that has the ability to have what we call racking. That can store goods. That would then be either brought in or exported out from that warehouse, whereas a manufacturing is an actual process. Procedure with tenant that is making something, they're not just storing something, they're, they're making something.
Okay, so sort of the layman's definition that we go with that is what, is what we're talking about here. Which I, which makes complete sense. I mean, complete sense. Okay, so the last thing I want to come back to with talking about that is. Mr. Cody made the point that you did survey in terms of looking at the parking for. Storage warehouse facilities, I guess, or that kind of thing. You looked at a number of other communities. I think everyone is aware there is a lot of controversy. Among towns about the size of these storage warehouses and the distribution centers and the, all of that, and obviously. People I'm sure will comment on that later, but when you reviewed, you know, when you reviewed these other towns, looking at the regulations. What did you find, what relative to allowable size? I mean, I know you mentioned East Gramby in that list. East Gramby has put a moratorium. On what they allow at this point. I think they had a maximum of maybe three hundred thousand square feet. I may be wrong on that, but what did you find when you surveyed those towns and what are you seeing in terms of? The reaction of. Client towns to. You know, the, the. The nature of the size and scale of these operations.
Mr. Chairman, I'll answer the question. This is Tom Cody. We, we did not. Review other towns regulations relative to building size limits. We didn't because we didn't, it wasn't really pertinent to, to the exercise that we were undertaking. We've applied for a special permit. For two different parking reductions, and so our research was directed at that. Bloomfield does not have. Any. Building size limitations for warehouses in the zoning regulations, so that question really didn't relate. To our application.
Thank you very much for answering my questions. Thank you, Kevin.
Okay, thank you. I believe. One more. I'd like to ask one more question, Mr. Robert Dickinson.
Yeah, yes, thank you. Question is, is it possible for the developer to offer additional right of way if it's necessary? When the town rebuilds the road in order to incorporate sidewalk or multi-use path? I know in the town I came from, we sometimes had wanted to do, to incorporate a sidewalk or path, but. There was high berms put in where the sidewalk should be. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not have any further. Participants that. Would like to speak at this time.
Can we, I'm sorry, can we get a response to that question?
Oh, sure.
I could maybe answer a portion of it, Brian, if you want to continue with the rest of it. So between West Dudley Town Road and the right of way adjacent to our property. Between that curb line and our property line, there's actually a relatively wide space. There's twenty feet in between that curb line and our building. So while the road is relatively narrow, the right of way is pretty wide in that area. There are some utility poles you'd have to navigate, but there is, it appears to be currently sufficient right away.
And I will just quick correction on that. So the twenty feet is from the existing edge of pavement to the property line of our development, not to the building.
Correct.
But, but yes, I do concur with, with Mr. Gagnon's response.
Thank you.
I still have some. Some hands that are raised. I think it's for comment.
We're still in questions now. We're moving to the commission. Questions. We'll start down with, with you, Mike. Mr. Oliver, any questions?
I do have a couple of questions. If you're, so you're telling me that you're investing into a. Five hundred thousand plus square foot house, not knowing if you have a tenant at all? Is that clear?
That's correct, Mr. Oliver, yes.
Thank you. No more questions.
Mr. Bolton. Oh, you mute, you muted.
Those you how late is getting. I don't have any questions. All my questions were actually asked and answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hussein.
Thanks, Dwight, because I have a few. Some of them are actually pretty answered by, or asked by the. Public comments, so that's good. The solar question, the sidewalk question. I do want to follow up quickly with some more of the questions that came across from the public comments. And Tom, the storage warehouse question you mentioned about the application, and I think, I think. I think Brian also mentioned it. Could you possibly consider something that's controlled hazardous, a storage or stored in that warehouse? Control, I guess, mitigated control or hazardous to the community? A fall under storage?
Mr. Hussein, could you just explain that question a little bit?
I guess, under the purview of storage, which is what you're applying for, can there any potential hazardous material be stored in the warehouse? Depending on your tenant.
I think any. Any hazardous materials would be. Would be controlled by, you know, state and federal law. This type of facility, I think Brian can speak to it. This is not. It's not the type of facility that would typically have. Any significant quantities of hazardous material.
Yeah, and thank you for the question, Mr. Hussein, and you know, I concur with what Mr. Cody is suggesting. I guess. My one consideration would be in terms of, you know, closed product, right? So let's just say for the instance of paint. Paint cans, product, you know. I'll be first to admit that I'm not, I'm not literate in Connecticut environmental law, so. I'm speaking a little out of ignorance here, but I believe there are permitting requirements really for any hazardous material that would have to be stored. Inside or outside of the building. That would, that we would have to receive permits if we had a tenant that came in that had a special need to, to store any sort of hazardous material.
Yeah, that's, that's good. And that's, that's the answer I was looking for too, because once it's like a permanent controlled. You know, material or stockpile or whatever that is. But again, Tom, I want to ask you this question of your, and these are just questions from. That came up from the public comments and I'll go back to my questions from the permit application. From your hundred and forty million square feet of tenants, who, who, who did your top three? Tenants right now roughly ballparking or, or at least if you don't can give other names, what their. Usages.
Brian? I'm sure, yeah, so I could speak to some of the ten. Um, sure, yeah, so I could speak to some of the tenants, um.
Don't have to go into details, it's like top three, just if you're familiar or if you're just the comment, the public, just to see what, who your, who your tenants usually are.
Yeah, so it's tough to say top three, but I'll give some examples, um, one that's, you know, right over the boundary in Windsor. Uh, we signed a lease with Target, um, for a facility, um, so that's nearby. Um, we've done a lot of work and work hand in hand with GM. Um, with storage facilities, we also do a lot of work with Chewy, um, which is an online, um, pet product retailer. Um, and as I mentioned before, Home Depot and Lowe's are also across our portfolio as well. Um, and they, they seem to, you know, go where any development is, um, because there's obviously a need for building products. So they are a very common tenant as well.
Yeah, that's good, Brian. Um, I just wanna have my day, so, I mean, for the record too. And usually when that tenant comes in, who is in charge of the higher end now? Is your tenant in charge of the higher end and local higher end per se? Or does, does Nord Point still have a say in that?
Uh, it generally is driven by the tenant, but we do take a hands-on approach. We look to make sure that if they're not familiar with the area, um, that we can help them, um, in their hiring needs and their employment needs. Um, I will say that we do also have, usually in smaller settings, um, for, for big, our big bus or our warehouse storage facilities, some, sometimes we do also get local businesses, um, what we call mom pa shops. Um, and that's why, you know, we mentioned, you know, this could be a single user, but this could also be partitioned in a way to support smaller space and more local businesses as well, and that's something that we've, we've had success in the past with as well.
Well, there's two things with that. I mean, I don't know if there's gonna be a, um, decision tonight or tabled or not, but either which way, I'd, I'd like at some point to see if you could get some local participation even in the higher end or potentially also, um, when I say local, obviously Bloomfield. And, you know, also potentially even if for your, for your tenant space too, if there's an opportunity for local set of sites for smaller, um, maybe minority businesses too, if, if it, if it allows. Um, just to, to take that into consideration. Alright, so now I'm gonna go to the site plan stuff and the permit stuff. Jonathan, the report you gave, was that for the special permit or does it also include the site plan review? Cuz I know we're only looking at the permits right now.
It's for both.
Oh, it's for both, okay. Alright, so let me go back to, um, so saying specifically to the, to the permit now. And, um, let me start off with the, the park in. And I know that you mentioned that, um, the park in, you have the deferred park in. So are you willing, you're looking to construct that right now? Is that part of the process, um? David, you're trying to, you're gonna construct the area, you just won't make it an assigned park in?
So we would not construct the deferred parking. Um, the intent of the deferred parking is if we needed, uh, for some reason, if the tenant changed or the demand changed the building, uh, we had the ability to put in that parking. So, no, the deferred parking would not be constructed at this point, but we just want to show that the site has the ability to come accommodate it.
So then your site plan then would have, basically, what's that area gonna be shown in the site plan? If, if, if the special permit is approved?
Uh, currently it's trailer parking, so that's in the rear of our site. Um, and if we had to convert that trailer parking to standard car parking, we could do that.
And, and the deferred parking is, you, you think you mentioned the deferred parking is for any park and not only trailer parking, correct?
The deferred parking would be standard car parking.
Okay, not, not for trailer parking?
Is correct, yes.
But, but the actual application, the way it's written, it could be deferred parking for a number amount. It doesn't have to be either trailer or car. It could also include deferred parking, could also include a trailer parking.
That's correct. We would have to provide a layout to the town that would dictate how that would work. Um, the layout that we provided as required by the town shows car parking as our deferred parking to get to that minimum parking requirement.
Would you and the town consider it if you pull back your map on the western side, next to West Dudley Town Road, where you have all the trailer? And I, I know why you have it, because if they can pull in, they could then load the vehicle and pull straight into the parking lot, right? On the western side of West Dudley Town Road. But for the sake of, I, I love the buffered area you have though, but yeah, ideally, can you not make that a deferred area and save all of those truck parkings to the other side for the interior of the building, so we can get rid of that? I know you have a buffer area, but get rid of the trailer park in there. Have you looked at that alternative?
Um, as part of a deferred parking plan, um, I think we would be fine showing, uh, additional car parking along West Dudley if, if needed. Um, our current site plan application does, uh, include trailer parking up on West Dudley, which we would.
You and I know what you're talking about, I just wanna let everyone else just. Because I think it'd be a better alternative to show that area as deferred parking and take the truck park and then put it back in the interior of the building where it's not. So you can explain to everyone or no?
Y- yeah, sure, if I, so if I understand the question correctly, um, currently we're showing all our deferred parking in the rear. So, uh, the southeast corner of the site, there's a, there's a box that would be converted to potentially car parking. And your question is, can we instead put that deferred parking up front along West Dudley Town Road? You know, I don't have an issue with that, Brian. I don't know if you have any, uh, concerns, but we could certainly show that from a site perspective.
Yeah, no, I, I have no issue, um, with that as, as a potential deferred parking plan if the, if the need arises for those parking spaces.
Yeah, I'd like that alternative better than, than having the trucks there right next to the, and I don't get me wrong, I still want to screen in there, but at least we'll have that nice area now there. Um, that's, that's good, I'm glad to hear that, so that's one. Um, the wall construction, I know the ten-foot wall construction is within the property, but are you still using the versalock wall for that ten-foot wall? And is that, um, that's a, that's a gravity type wall, right, with a gene force, uh, uh, soil reinforced? Type of, uh, material?
That's correct, yeah, it would be a, a modular block wall, uh, so it would be, uh, the style of a versalock wall with, um, a geogrid behind it, uh, retaining the soil, that's correct.
Yeah, but the constructibility is so close to the wetlands, I assume because it's that type of wall, you chose that so that constructibility is easier, so that it is less disturbance towards the wetlands, correct?
Uh, that's correct, yeah, as opposed to a concrete wall or, uh, kind of more impactful wall. This is, yeah, you could check this with a laborer and they kinda just, you know, stack the blocks and, and, and that's it.
Alright, great. Um, the light pole, so I don't mind, again, with the light pole. Um, and you're, you wanna, you wanna waiver from the fourteen foot to, you said it was how much, twenty-four feet you wanna bring it to?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that, the only thing, the only is. Sorry, just got some. Oh, Mike, can you mute? Mike Oliver, yeah, thanks. Um, the only thing I, I, I would suggest is that I would keep the fourteen-foot, um, light poles along the driveway into the property, and then I would suggest making the interior park in twenty-four feet. I don't know if I'd wanna have twenty-four-foot light poles, you know, protruding out on, on those driveways, and it, it probably won't be, it'll be inconsistent with, you know, what we have right now for the other industrial site. So would you consider keeping all the driveways along into the property fourteen feet? And then keeping the parking lots and the parking stalls inside a property twenty-four feet, would you guys consider that?
Um, yeah, we would have to run the analysis, but I'm, I'm certainly receptive to, um, considering that, sure. We have to make sure we have the proper light levels, but we could study that, absolutely.
Alright, um, the traffic impact study now, um. So, so this is, this, the rest of these are probably gonna go, go, come to, um, sorry, Mr. Heskett. I, your ITE, um, requirements or projections are saying the two to one in terms of car traffic, the, um, truck traffic based on the nine hundred and eighty-nine, um, increase, uh, activity. But yet the park in shows roughly a one-to-one ratio. It's kinda like sixty-forty, so let's just say fifty-fifty for now. So in actuality, even though the ITE says that two to one, your actual site will be almost a one-to-one in terms of truck to truck to car, correct?
I haven't done that analysis, but, uh, trip generation and parking count are, are not directly related, so.
Alright, take a look at that for next, our, our next meeting, so we can get that answer if you don't mind. And then the other question I had do is.
What was, what was the question specifically again, if you don't mind?
I know, I think your ITE generation requirement showed the street, uh, parking increasing to nine eighty-nine, and you mentioned it's a two-to-one split, two cars to one truck. But that's for that point location there at West, what, what, um, was it, uh, West Dudley Town Road and one eighty-seven, Blue Hills? But did you take a look at like a point of entry at your area there just to see what that split would be? Are you able to do an analysis right around there, coming out of your lot per se?
I think we had about, we had about seventy percent of our traffic exiting the facility going north on, um, West Dudley Town Road, if that's your question.
Is the ratio still maintained two to one?
I, I, I don't know what ratio you're referring to, so. Uh, we, we projected seventy-five percent of the, of the traffic, uh, going north on Dudley Town Road to Route one eighty-seven, and, um, twenty-five percent of the traffic utilizing, um, uh, West Dudley Town Road to Philly Street and, uh, Alderman's Road. Uh, from a truck standpoint, I would think that ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of the truck traffic would be using West Dudley Town Road up to Blue Hills Avenue. As, I know we're, we don't want truck traffic on Philly Street. Um, we concur with that, um. I think if a truck was to use Philly Street, they would probably have a destination in downtown Bloomfield. Potentially Canton or Simsbury, which i- in, in the universe of where trucks could go to and come from is relatively small. Uh, and I would think that even someone going to Canton or Simsbury might find it more convenient to use Route one eighty-seven to two eighteen, um, to access those areas than to use the narrower, more curvy streets through the center of town, which require a lot of different, uh, traffic signals and, and left turn and right turn movements. Where, uh, Route one eighty-seven and two eighteen is wider pavement, straighter, less signals and and, and it might actually be faster for a truck to traverse than through the center of town, so. Um, yes, the, 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 the ratio of truck to vehicle traffic in that direction is, is significantly higher toward one eighty-seven than toward the, uh, toward the local roads.
And I, I might have missed this, but on the plans that you show in the south entrance or the south exit, I should say, um, you were saying we don't wanna push them out the Philly Road, or Philly Street, sorry. I see only left turn exits, I don't see a right turn template. Is it that because we can make a right turn there, correct?
One could make a right turn out of that driveway and, and go up, uh, West Dudley Town Road. I, I don't see why you would, because you just use the other driveway. It would be much shorter and faster for you.
Yeah, I didn't see a turn-in template on that. David, did you guys put a turn-in template on the right turn out of there?
Yeah, just, just to clarify, um, trucks would not take that right, so, uh, passenger vehicles could, but we would not have tractor trailers taking that right. Tractor trailers would use a, a different entrance.
Right, so why would we, why is it because of the curb cut or the side distance? Cuz we wanna keep them away from Philly Street, so why, why we shouldn't make them turn right? We shouldn't make it available for them to turn right, so we can let them, give them the option to go back in West Dudley Town to Blue Hills, right? To keep them away from, what's, what was the reason there? Is that a shorter side distance, or what was the reason we can't make a right turn over the truck?
Uh, well, a, a couple of reasons, um, we did not, there's, where's wetlands in that area? So we did not wanna increase the radius of that right turn to impact the wetlands. Uh, there's also a utility pole, which we want to avoid. Um, and thirdly, there's two other exits on, um, the, you know, on the west side of the site on West Dudley, which if you wanted to take that right, you would use one of those two exits instead of the one to the south.
Okay, so the south rarely, the south exit is really for left turns only for the trucks?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, alright, and then, um, so the, 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 I'm sorry, I didn't hear it in the report, but did you guys get the OST report also?
We had made an application to OSTA. We have not received, uh, any comments or an approval from them at this time.
Are you, do you think you'll be able to get some information for their next, our next meeting?
I highly doubt that. It's, it's not their standard, uh, procedure to make an approval until after the local commissions have acted. Uh, we, we may get some initial feedback from them, and if we do, we'll be, uh, we'll be happy to share it with you.
Yeah, I think the initial feedback would be good too, if we can, that'd be good, just to help alleviate some of the, you know, questions about the traffic in the area. And then, um.
If we, if we receive that, we'll provide it to you, yep.
Yeah, and again, the last one I have to ask, and I think, Tom, you brought this up, so because you brought it up, I'll ask it. And, um, I know you looked at some of the best practices, or not necessarily the best practices, you looked at what some of the other towns are doing in terms of, um, in terms of, um, the parking ratios and so forth. Did you guys apply to any other towns? Outside of Bloomfield? I'm just curious.
Uh, do you mean for this particular project or?
Or similar, or similar projects, yes.
Well, I mean, I, I, I can ans- answer your question this way. I've worked with other clients in warehouse applications in Windsor, Windsor Locks, South Windsor, Enfield, those communities.
Okay, so, so you did see you're using best practices then?
Correct, so in each of those communities that I just referenced, the applicant utilized the warehouse parking generation ratio for the warehouse use and, and not the manufacturing or similar category.
So that's something that we probably should revise in our.
It's, our observation was that the vast majority of the towns in your area do have the two different categories for parking.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, Mr. Chair, that's all I have for now, thank you.
It, uh, Mr. Chair, can I clarify, um, one of my comments? I'm not sure if I was clear on the deferred parking.
Yeah, go ahead, I think Byron.
Okay, I, I just wanted to get clear, um, for the deferred parking, we're currently showing the deferred parking on the eastern portion of the site, and I, I believe the question was, in our deferred parking plan, can you move that along West Dudley? And, you know, we could do that, um. We still intend, uh, with our site plan application to build trailer spaces along West Dudley. But in the case where we needed that deferred parking, that could be along West Dudley.
So when you say you're gonna bill it, you're gonna bill it for use?
Build, um, so the intent is to build trailer spaces along West Dudley. And then we also have a deferred parking plan, and, um, you know, the deferred parking is on the back of the site currently, the east side of the site. Um, we could relocate that deferred parking in our deferred parking plan, uh, along West Dudley.
So what I was saying though, is that the deferred park in, you won't be in use at all, right? Even then the eastern side. So I would like for you to show the deferred park in on the western side along where the trailers would be, so there's no trailers there.
Okay, so that, I think, uh, I misunderstood your question. So our intent is still to show trailer parking spaces along West Dudley Town Road in our application. So i- we do not need any additional car parking spaces, so there actually wouldn't be a use for car parking if we put.
The deferred parking does not have to be truck, trailer, or car, it could be either. So what I'm saying, can you just re-defer those trailer parking spaces to the eastern side? And just leave that spot open for either car or trucks later. I would like to keep that area open as a deferred park in where there's no use. It's for, because of the street, because it's so close to the street and not having all those trailers, or even with a screened area. Is that possible, Brian?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I'm gonna say no, um, I'm gonna defer to, to Brian, uh, to consider that. But i- I know there is a demand for trailer spaces and, um, you know, that's the available space for it. And we did put considerable effort into screening those trailers, so, um, you wouldn't necessarily see them from West Dudley Town Road, even though they're there.
Yeah, i- i- it's a great question, and, you know, I'll, I'll answer it a couple ways. Um, one, just for clarification on, on size of buffer. So from the edge of our proposed trailer parking along West Dudley Town Road and the existing paved right of way for West Dudley Town Road is approximately sixty to sixty-five feet. So that is an area that we proposed, um, not just the, the, um, areas of landscaping for buffering, but also, uh, areas of some swelling too along the southern boundary, uh, to help with stormwater management there. Um, from an operational perspective, um, there is loading docks on either side of the building, and it is important from a tenant's perspective, and this is something we run into all the time, to have close proximity to trailer parking. So if we were to outright eliminate trailer parking along the western side of the building that is adjacent to West Dudley Town Road, that would then, one, create a requirement for any trailer to have to go around the building to the backside if needed. And more importantly, if there was more than one tenant, we would have a situation where we could potentially not even lease part of the building, because they wouldn't have access to the trailer parking on the other side of the building. Um, so from an operational perspective, um, it would really limit functionality. Um, and just based on what we see in the market, too, trailer parking for for temporary storage of the trailers is very important to tenants. And which is why we provide it there.
So now when you say the temporary, how is it like overnight, a few hours or maybe weeks? When for that area, if you kept them there and you say temporary parking, what are you looking at?
It it's a great question, and honestly, it's it's all tenant driven. Um, yeah, I wouldn't be able to answer that um. Specifically for this.
All right, let me think about that some more. Um, I'm all set for now. Um. Mr. Chair, thanks.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Adams.
Thank you. Um. Question for me, from me, deferred parking, that's optional parking. Am I correct with that? It's almost like flow over. Can you answer that, please?
Yes, so the deferred parking is not going to be constructed, uh, so the deferred parking is a zoning requirement to meet a certain minimum um parking ratio. Um, so it's it's a a plan uh intended to prove that if we did need that parking. Uh, say a tenant did come in that needed more car parking, uh, we have the ability to construct it, but it's not intended on being built uh currently.
Thank you. So and also. Wouldn't hazardous material storage need approval from, you know, the fire marshal and the town? If that were to be the case for some of the storage units there? Question. Maybe the town can answer that.
I would assume so, Michelle. Um. You know, that's that's not in my bailiwick.
I just wanted to put it out.
I would assume that the fire marshal and the fire department would be. Very interested in the storage of hazardous material in terms of their preparation for. Uh, responding to any uh incident that happened on the property. Um, I do not know what their actual requirements are, but my my belief is that they would certainly have to sign off on them. On its um. On its safety and location and and how it's protected.
Thank you. As a twenty-year firefighter, it was a rhetorical question. I just put that out there for discussion, but thank you. Um, uh, also, when it comes to, I know that the the residents had concern on Philly Street about traffic and the tractor trailers. Possibly making their way down their street. Um. Would it be something that maybe we can have the police department issue warnings? Uh, subsequent ticketing, I mean, that would be a hard stop for those tractor trailers to neander down that street. Um, maybe we can think of something like that going forward. Um. And that is it for my questions. I'll have comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Mr. Bolton, did I skip you? Oh, okay, Ms. Blint. Questions?
In the interest of time, if um the answers to any of these questions can be as brief as possible, I'd really appreciate it. We have a lot of other agenda items to get to. So how long has this business North Point been part of the average community, like five to ten years? Or are we talking decades?
Um, so Ms. Blint, I can answer that. So the North Point Development as a company has been around for about eleven years. Um, but in terms of our approach is long-term ownership um and property management, so we look to. Own and maintain uh the developments uh in per- per two. I just screwed up that word.
So do you lease these properties or do people?
That's correct.
Them, okay.
Yeah, so we would look to lease these properties. That's correct.
From your website, it looks like you've got seventy-one commercial listings in the U.S. right now. And how long, if that's correct? But either way, how long before they're typically leased once a tenant leaves? What's the time between someone leaving and then leasing one of these buildings again?
A very good question. Yeah, it's a it's a very good question, and I I think, you know, you you do say regardless of the size, I think it is dependent on size, but also the market itself. Um. You know, I can I can speak by example in Windsor with Target, you know, that came around the time that we started construction. Um, we had a had a lease signed with Target, so um oftentimes uh it's, or I would say it's incredibly rare to have a full building constructed without a tenant. Um, so at some point between approvals and uh midway to, I'll say, three quarters of the way through construction is is the typical timeline that we would have a tenant.
Okay, great. I'm not sure who to direct this question to, but where are the closest residential neighbors? How far away are they? I see two P L R zones close by. Kristen Way. Castlewood Drive, Brighton Parkway. Are those built communities?
Um, they are built communities. Um. Castle Woods off of Woodland. Not sure where the other, you know, the the closest residential is going to be on Philly Street.
Okay.
Um, um. They're the closest and.
That's fine.
Beyond that, the others are are. Are fairly distant.
Okay. And then um. Thank you, I'm sorry. I just want to get through these as quickly as possible. How long are trucks allowed to idle? At a facility such as a storage warehouse? Is there a statutory maximum?
Again, I'm I'm not aware of one. Um.
I can address that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blint, the Connecticut D E P does have. A a regulation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that limits truck idling to three minutes.
Yeah, and I'm sure that's not really what happens in real life, but um I figured I would ask. Thanks. And then maybe this is directed to the town. I'm not sure if this is appropriate for now, but. Is it possible to find a way to earmark money for annual road upkeep, possibly in lieu of taxes, a certain percentage?
Well, we have the we have the annual capital improvement program that has um. Uh, road uh repair, road reconstruction, road paving. In it, it's a combination of um. Local um. Local funds um. You you know, depending on the size of it, rarely do we bond for that, but you know, just in the general fund from our taxes. A very significant amount of that money comes from the state in their in their town aid road program. And then there are a number of federal programs, particularly right now, that are available to the town that Bloomfield's. Uh, applying for and taking advantage of of funds to um. To improve um roads throughout throughout the community, so and there's a regular. Paving program that the Department of Public Works um. Runs on on a regular basis, and um that can certainly be made available in terms of what their plans are.
Okay, I'm not not sure if I completely understand that, but I'm wondering if we could make a contingent upon approval down the road. Wherever it makes the most sense to um. Give the potential tenant or the future tenant some skin in the game when it comes to fixing our roads. That's all I have.
As I indicated before, I'm not sure we have that authority. You know, it's a common, you know, with this particular type of development, we do with subdivisions.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a totally different process. Um. That's certainly um. Something that towns do negotiate and um.
It's the first time for everything.
Right, um, so whether, you know, it's not um. It's not something we can require, but it's something that we can we can negotiate. And um I note that the um town planner has joined us as the uh. Town council meeting's been recessed till um next week, and uh. Justin may have some additional comments to make. I don't want to speak over him or for him.
Yeah, I don't want to prolong this question at all. Thanks so much. Bye.
Okay.
All set, Katie? Uh, Mr. Malat.
Um, question, this might uh first one might be for the the town. Are there any existing violations uh? On the property?
I'm not aware of any, but that doesn't mean there aren't any, but Linda can probably answer that.
Um, there are none that we are aware of at this time.
Okay, um. I thought there there might have been some in the past, but that's why I said existing. Um.
If there were, uh, I I don't know of any open zoning violations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh. Uh, no, I won't get an answer on our operations without a tenant, but maybe. Uh, for the average uh client or or. Person who leases these types uh similar to the prior questions where there was an example, what are the typical hours of operation? Um, for warehouses like this?
Uh, that's an excellent question, uh, Mr. Malat, so. Uh, based on our portfolio, we would say that. Uh, ninety percent of our portfolio would operate under standard business hours, usually a two-shift approach. Um, I will add that we do have tenants. Uh, that do require twenty-four hour operation, but that's usually less than ten percent of of the tenants that we work with.
Sure, um. For the south part of the development and the site, there is the driveway showing coming on to um. It's West Dudley, close to Philly. Uh, what type of buffers are there? It looks like there's an existing potential residential that. Uh, or in residential use at that corner. Is that correct?
Um, I'm not sure, Dave, if you could bring up a map, but if I'm understanding the question correctly, the driveway that we're. Proposing on that southern area nearest Philly is. Aligned with the existing driveway for the Butler operation on the proposed project site. It is not through. A residential area.
I I understand it's not, it's not through a a residential area, but there, I'm asking on the south. I guess it'd be southeast, maybe, if I'm orienting myself correctly. There is a home. As a neighbor. Next to that driveway. I understand it's all owned, I do.
Thank Commissioner, there is an existing residence um immediately east. Of that driveway.
Okay, thank you. And so the question after confirming that is, what type of buffer do we have going up that driveway?
So I think I could answer that, um, Sir Malat. So there's an existing grove of trees that exists between that existing driveway. And that residential property to the east, uh, and our intent is to maintain that that grove of trees.
Okay, and and are are those deciduous or evergreens? Will they keep screening all year round?
But I have to close the look, but I believe they're mostly deciduous trees.
Okay. Uh, it it'd be good to have some uh screening year round. Uh. Going back to to, I think this question is going to be for the town as well. I- is West Dudley. Uh, as far as it is going around the bend up to the the northern connection to one eighty-seven Blue Hills. Um, is that currently up to our town standards, me- meaning in width? I think someone, I forget the the number of feet, but someone said it was currently.
That's a good question, Commissioner. I, you know, I. The main issue has, you know, besides the condition of the pavement, is drainage on that road. I would um, I would. I would, you know, in terms of um. You know, lane width um. You know, I I would not want to commit one way or the other. I think that um. Given their druthers, uh, my suspicion is that D P W would like a slightly wider lane. Lane width through there, but I think that I would have to defer to them to give you a. A really accurate answer on that question. Uh, but the real issue on that, besides paving condition, is drainage, which impacts the road.
Holes. Um. The another question, and this might go to the uh traffic engineer. Uh, there, I think there was reference to the intersection of three oh five. And Old Windsor Road and East. Is it East one, the Berry? I'm I'm trying to think of all the um. No, that's the wrong one, sorry. So Old Windsor Road, um, three oh five. And and Blue Hills, there was there was reference to that light. It was, did I pick up on that correctly?
Yes, we referenced that uh intersection, yep.
So um, I was trying to understand, i- it was at the intersection that went from a a C to a D without this, without the timing change?
That's the intersection, correct, yep.
Okay, oh. From an a a primary exit out of Dudley or or West Dudley, that is further north. Um, so and trucks coming. A. And unless they were making a a turn s- uh out of the south or coming left uh and going south out of the the development. They wouldn't. I I guess it would just be the trucks come entering, coming north Blue Hills to go get to the site or leaving the site. Is that where that? It's coming from, because I'm not seeing where a lot of trucks would. Or or would would a lot of trucks be going? Left out of the site or, yeah, I gotta orient myself in going down Old Windsor Road. Um, I was a little confused on that. I I'm.
We believe that most, we believe that most of our site traffic will exit our site via a right-hand turn. Out of the driveways onto West Dudley Town Road, go up to the intersection of Route uh West Dudley Town Road or one eighty-seven. Execute a right-hand turn at that location. And then execute a left-hand turn from Route one eighty-seven onto three oh five to to access Interstate ninety-one. At that, at the interchange in Windsor.
So it's that extra. Left-hand turn going onto three oh five down to the highway. That is is where it impacted that particular intersection.
Yes, mu- mu- much of the difficulty of that intersection is the southbound or eastbound. Uh, one eighty-seven kind of goes in a northwest-southeast direction, so it's tough. Uh, that left-hand turn from one eighty-seven onto three oh five, which uh during our counts and our observations uh. Backed up significantly by providing a little extra time to that particular movement. We can shorten up that queue substantially and uh improve the levels of service at the intersection, and that's what we've proposed in our report.
Okay, uh. From the report, did it say how many? So coming right out of the development and going uh to the the north. Connection of West Dudley to to Blue Hills to to one eighty-seven. How many would turn left and go up, say, Day Hill? And and the reason I I'm I'm asking this, and maybe can add on to the question, I. I don't think, and maybe a con- confirmation, there's a left-hand only turn there? There's no left-hand only signal or?
That's correct.
We.
Okay.
We.
There's no left.
Projected about.
No left-hand turns. Um, right away there.
Across from Phoenix, right?
Right, correct.
Yeah, okay.
You did. There's no um, no preference for left turns.
What it, with the traffic study. In percentage of vehicles that might go up to the highway, say they're going north and they choose to go Day Hill, um. What would be the impact there? Just and what did the model say?
We're projecting about twenty percent of the site traffic to go in that direction.
Okay.
Either they're going to, either they're uh workers going to Simsbury or Grandy, or they could be truck traffic utilizing Day Hill Road.
Okay, so that that's helpful. Is that? Yeah, that helps understand. Uh. That covers my questions. Thank you.
Uh, I believe everyone. We've gotten to um. In the essence of time. I have no questions. We're going to move straight to comments. Um, is there anyone in the audience with any comments?
Uh, we have a few hands being raised. Um, one, two, three, four, five, six. Seven. One moment. I'm letting uh Karen sprout in again. She'd like to comment.
Um, can I address the chair quickly?
Yes.
Um, could we potentially limit these comments, uh, especially for folks who have already spoken to a minute or two minutes?
Yes.
Maximum?
Yes.
Okay. Karen, you're on.
They started, did did Karen and the other ones, did you guys hear that? That you're going to be limited to two minutes as far as your comments?
That you're gonna be limited to two minutes as far as your comments? Due to our agenda and the timeframe right now?
Okay, I I I heard it. Stop me when you need to.
Okay, thank you.
Is it time for me or we wait, are we waiting still?
You can go.
Okay, um this is Karen Sprout. Thank you all for your thoughtful considerations. There's lots of stuff going on with this proposal. It's huge. Um and I appreciate your comments about the minimal impact uh on residential neighbors on West Dudley. However, as uh Jonathan indicated recent or earlier, um there are virtually no residential neighbors on West Dudley. The the interest uh that we would have is more on Philly Street where it's heavily, uh it's heavily residential. And it is one of the most beautiful streets in in all of Bloomfield. And it has become a busy thoroughfare for businesses, um but it is also a huge asset to Bloomfield. And I'm concerned with all this discussion of a massive warehouse close to this beautiful street when we have no idea of what's going into it and what the trucks will be carrying that go back and forth relative to dangerous, an accident or whatever. So I, as you currently are, I would ask you to continue to uh think a lot about this and to as to the extent you can impose restrictions on truck traffic uh and stipulate that it must be routed to Blue Hills and not on this um residential street, which is windy, curvy. Um also happens to have um lots of children that live on the street next to me and across from me. And as you're probably well aware, a elementary school at the end of the street. Um and that a heavy semi-tractor trailer traffics on on tra- traffic on Philly Street would be very deleterious. And um just thank you for considering that as a large component of your judgments on this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
I apologize. Thank you. Next is uh Gil Riley.
Hi, I would just like to um comment that I would like to see if this development goes through that um some type of financial obligation is put on the developer to fund money to um improve West Dudley Town Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh we have a Robert Dickinson.
You have to unmute yourself, Robert.
I just asked him to unmute. Okay, I will go on to the next. We'll come back to you, Robert. Tricia Forster.
Hi, um thank you for the good comments that you got or questions that you guys did ask. Um I'm gonna try and make this brief, but I do have a lot of comments, and I hope that we'll have another chance to do them. Um West Dudley, in regards to West Dudley, something was said about width. Width is definitely an issue. It's only a twenty-two-foot wide road. Philly's twenty-eight. Philly's pretty narrow. Um which is why it should not have truck traffic on it. Twenty-two feet is way too narrow. That it needs to be completely redone. It doesn't have a road base. It needs to be started from scratch, so that's gonna be a significant investment. Um I travel that way quite a bit. I live at that end of West uh or Philly Street. That light at one eighty-seven and West Dudley, um very quick, there is to crapshoot which direction the people across from you are going. When they start going, nobody uses their signals. They go over, they they race around the trucks in front of them and just cut across in front of you, so that'll be fun. Um traffic at one eighty-seven and three oh five old um old Windsor Road. That backs up incredibly when there's a lot of trucks coming out of um Home Goods. So yes, increasing the length will help, but you're still trying to get trucks through versus cars through, so it's still gonna back up. It's still gonna be a problem. Um there was a mention that at West Dudley and Philly at night, it could go from eleven, Level A to a Level C um with traffic and assuming that's just mostly car traffic. And I did some research on what a Level C is, and it says that it's below but efficiently close to capacity. So you're going to be overwhelming and a already busy intersection by adding all this car traffic. Um and not to mention what happens when that traffic hits the center of town, which already blocks up when it, when it's busy and at rush hour. I'm a firefighter. I
Chris, you're at, you're at the two-minute mark. Can you quickly wrap this up?
Well, I will try. I said I'm a fi- I'm a firefighter, and I'll tell you, I can't get to the firehouse between, say, three thirty and six. I ca- I usually can't get there for fire calls. I it I have to turn my lights off and just go through traffic, cause there's just too much traffic through there. Um so I will finish this up in that this is a very, very large warehouse that is being built with no projected tenant, and I think that if this is something that town wants and town wants to build, building it with a tenant, a known entity, and somehow, someone you have control over what they're doing when they're coming in is a much better use for the town, and it's much better for the town than just guessing that who's gonna come in and what they're gonna do. And I hope we have more comments at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Paula Jones.
Can you hear me?
Hi Paula.
Yes.
Yeah. Um I guess I would like to state for the record that I really resent how rushed I feel about this. This is a half a million square foot building, and the fact that you're tabling and keeping open the hearing for the Puppi's. But we're being pushed and told we have one to two minutes to comment when we're the ones that are gonna have to live with the traffic and deal with it. I've been behind six tractor trailers at that intersection. Everything that people are saying about that intersection is true. Um I would argue that the special permit requirements, the eligibility requirements, aren't satisfied with this application. So I would hope that you would read my comments and maybe take my point of view into consideration because obviously I'm not gonna have time to express my opinion here. So I'm gonna leave it at that, and I would ask this commission to keep this open so that people have an opportunity, a proper opportunity to make their opinions known. Thank you. I'm done.
Yeah.
Thank you. Kevin Goff.
Hi, yes, Kevin Goff, Five Bear Ridge. Um I would like to echo that sentiment. Uh I did, I did um uh submit written comments yesterday. I assumed those were transmitted to the committee. I didn't get them in by seven o'clock last night, but I did get them in yesterday. I hope you have them. Um the only thing I would correct from the, with that written comment is, um I am happy to hear that that under this proposal uh with the um birmingham and um uh buffering, there would be no net loss of trees. In fact, there would be an increase. That's a good thing. I was obviously wrong about that. Uh however, I was not wrong about the impervious surface. You heard tonight that this is going to be a tenfold increase in the amount of impervious surface, and I got, I got news for you. The box turtles are not gonna be happy about that. Um so um you know, I also went through, I don't think that the conditions for the special permit for the warehouse have been met. Uh I also think we're in a very bad situation at this point. Um we let this slip in. Other communities, East Granby, South Windsor, number of other communities have already realized that you know, this is not your father's warehouse. Uh back in the day, we knew what a warehouse was. These are massive distribution centers, and um you know, we have not even discussed tonight what happens if this structure doesn't find a tenant or if the cost of energy, uh of of fuel transportation for trucking uh causes all of these things to cease in five years, who's gonna deconstruct this and remediate the land for us? Uh I mentioned in my letter that anyone who had had, eh who has been to um a town with showcase cinemas knows what the trouble those towns have had. So I would ask that the commission do its, uh you know, I hope that this will be, hearing will be continued so that people can comment again uh at the next meeting, um and more people are aware of this. Uh but I would ask ultimately that the commission look at your rules, deny the special permit, and then be proactive. Put in place a moratorium until you actually do put regulations, uh put rules in the regulations to restrict the size and scale and impact of these uh these buildings. We, we have no cost-benefit analysis here, and I think we all agree uh that the impact to the taxpayers of maintaining the roads, the surrounding area is just gonna be um horrendous. Um I also did want to mention um in my letter, I I noted that uh
Okay, Kev, you got about fifteen seconds.
Yeah, that's fine. You're I'm fine. That's, that's good. Thank, thank you. Thank you, Byron. Um but I just want to mention that um uh one of the uh in the article in the Scramby, they mentioned, uh one of the commissioners mentioned uh uh as uh that uh what's the quote? They don't want to be like the, you know, don't want to be uh like Day Hill Road. Uh so why do we want to create Day Hill Road here? Uh we have a chance to uh restrict the size and scale of these things, and that's what we should do. Thank you.
We have Valerie Robesetti.
Hi, yes, thank you. Um thanks for the information, but what disturbs me is that a a lot of this trap information is based on averages. And because we have no tenant and no actual idea of what's really going to happen, those, those averages may be underestimates of what's going on. I just looked, I I I came from Hartford Hospital to drive down Dudley Road and actually Google and Apple Maps both route you through one seventy-eight through East Winton Berry Avenue. So that comment that uh Mr. Hesketh made about how um at least coming from the south, that's going to be an access point to this area, not just um Blue Hills Road. Um and I I just think we're inviting an out-of-state company to come and, you know, hopefully for them to make a profit over a trucking business, which is just gonna pollute the, pollute the the um the atmosphere more. It's going to create a lot of greenhouse gas emissions. It's going to cause a lot of road deterioration. And it's, why are we doing this? The po- the plan of conservation development is, is twelve years old. It's about to be revised. And I think we all have a better idea of what we're facing in the planet. I, for one, as a Bloomfield resident, don't want to pay taxes to repair the road. I don't want that, that neighborhood, which I don't live close to, but I would not want any, anywhere near the level of truck tra- excuse me, truck traffic near my home. And I think we have a decision to make as a community is whether, is this is the kind of business development that we really want established in town. So I thank them for the presentation. I really appreciate all the environmental um steps they took to to remediate the property, replace trees, save the wet ones, et cetera, et cetera. But the big, you know, the big problem in the room is that we're inviting a a trucking business into this part of town. That's really not worth the cost to the town or the taxpayers. So thank you. I personally hope you deny the permit. Thank you.
All righty.
Thank you. As quickly as possible. Uh Tolly Miller.
Hello. Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Um so I really appreciate the presentation also. And you know, if I wanted a warehouse, a really mega warehouse and a trucking industry, I think you really made a good sell for it, but I don't. I really don't, not in Bloomfield. And I find that it's really ironic that our town um in twenty-twenty-one passed a climate emergency resolution, because in the last twelve years since we stood back and looked at what we want in the town of Bloomfield and we're overdue on that, climate change has become much more present in all of our lives, and it's really, really important that we start shutting off all greenhouse gas emissions. So the idea that we would at this point in time with what we know invite a company in to create a mega warehouse and truck traffic, which is gonna impact neighborhoods, it will introduce air pollution, it will introduce noise pollution, and it also really will um bring more costs onto the residents for maintaining the roads. We know that, and um that's gonna fall on us. So if I wanted a warehouse, I think you all did a really good job, and you're trying to do the best you can to make it amenable. But warehouses are not what we want. South Windsor just recently extended their moratorium for a year. They're gonna go another four or five months to stop working with mega warehouses at all or inviting them into the community and really look at alternatives. What other kinds of commercial businesses would really help the town? Smaller businesses, things that really um provide community so that those residential communities that are close to this won't be impacted in this way. Um so I really urge you to turn down the permit. At the very least, I think we need another meeting where more people can come forward and speak without the sense of pressure. This is a really important commitment by the town. And I think we all need to to be heard. Um so thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
You're muted, Linda.
We have Karen Sprout. I believe she spoke. I'm not sure if this is it. Would you like to, oh, it's down. Never mind. All set. This is it. No other comment.
All right, great. Uh this time we'll take comments by the commission. We'll start with you, Mr. Mallett. Any comments?
Oh. Might not be popular, but I would be okay with continuing this to give people more opportunity. Uh and we won't drag it on tonight, but just a few for me. Um I think my biggest concern is with the road. It just is not set to handle. Uh I would love to see the site plan updated for the south driveway for the lower light poles, as Commissioner Hussein mentioned, and make sure there's proper buffering if this plan were to move forward. Um and and yeah, the road is way too narrow um uh to handle two cars and a bicycle or a pedestrian right now. Um that would be my personal opinion, even just from driving through there today.
Thank you. Uh Ms. Blint?
I completely echo um Commissioner Mallett's concerns about the road and also the, I would think, a popular opinion to continue the conversation at this time of night. Um it just doesn't uh seem productive to continue to drag on, and um if we have the opportunity to hear more comments and more thoughtfully consider these opinions or our decisions, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Bolton?
Um I certainly echo the sentiments and comments of Commissioner Blint and Mallett. Um concerned about tractor-trailer traffic potentially on Philly Street. It should be prohibited, discouraged, and it certainly should be enforced. Um disturbed to hear that we have a distribution facility of this scale being proposed in Bloomfield, and we don't have simple tile infrastructure to support it and have to provide that support on our nickel. Um but I'm also disturbed that we don't have a, a, a a known tenant. And so I would certainly love to uh support pushing this out to another uh meeting, uh because um although I think the presentation, despite what others have said, I think their presentation, yeah, yeah, I think it captured the essence of uh of our regs. Um it's just a matter of the right fit. Um currently, and so I I I do think your presentation was was a very well thought-out presentation, but I I am left somewhat disturbed by it, by 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 those things mentioned. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh Mr. Hussein?
Uh thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh my two um um echo the comments of all my previous um commissioners. I echo the comments of all my previous commissioners. Let's continue the meeting. Have them update the site plans with the comments they got tonight. I, I used to live in Woodland Ave and I saw people walk in on the road, come in into Niagara and some of the other industrial areas there, regular workers, I think, putting that sidewalk, widening that street. But also trying to get some feedback from OSDA and Condot about probably the signalizations and their, their impact study with the truck traffic that's going to be increased there is, is big. And like I mentioned, you know, like Mr. Mallett said, you know, some screening the south side, updating the site plans for some of the stuff that you heard here tonight. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Adams.
Okay. Just one, one comment. It's not unusual for the, the theory, let's build it, they will come. That's actually a real theory in investment and in real estate. So I'm not alarmed that they don't really have a key, you know, a hold as to what tenants they're going to put in. Or the other thing is, you, they're not going to show their hands because someone else might steal the tenant. It's just business savvy. I wanted to say, thank you for thinking about Bloomfield. Please don't be disturbed or deterred by the comments you heard tonight. We do welcome innovation and, and, and new businesses. Let's, you know, come to the table. And the presentation I thought was very well done. I mean, you seem to have very capable staff of experts that put this together and it was, I was well informed. Thank you.
Mr. Oliver.
Ah, yes, just like Commissioner Adams said, your presentation was put together very well. It's nice to see different things come to Bloomfield, but in, in my point of view, the, the community has spoken and, whatever the community determines is, is who put us in these positions. So I think we need to fulfill the needs of the community and maybe put this off. It's a long night and I'll pick up again next month and, or, or another meeting and see where this goes. Thank you.
All right, as the chair, I enjoyed the presentation, but I don't have any, any comments on it. So I'm going to leave it up to the commission. Oh, well, before I do that, the applicant, is there anything else that you'd like to say at this point?
Mr. Chairman, this is Tom Cody. I'll, I'll just give one final thought. We really appreciate the dialogue that we've had this evening. Great questions. There are some things I think that we can do to try to address some of the questions that didn't, couldn't get fully answered tonight. And I think we'd like an opportunity to do that. We would, we would support if the commission's feeling is that you want to continue this hearing to your next meeting. We would be supportive of that and would look forward to coming back at the next meeting and continue the discussion.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a suggestion as well, and I, I know I came in late to this and I apologize for that. I, as you know, I was at a town council meeting. It may be beneficial from the comments I overheard at the end to see if we could get our public works director to attend the meeting, to offer some comments from his perspective, or at, at least get a sort of a written statement from him as to what maybe his thoughts and concerns are. I think that might go some way to addressing some of the concerns about the street and to, you know, to get his feelings on it.
Well, I think his presence would be more than just a written statement. So if you, if you want to do that, sure.
If I may too, Justin, just see if we can also get some feedback from either Condot or someone. Maybe Jonathan can reach out about the signalizations at three oh five and at West Dudley Town Road about the concerns you heard tonight about traffic signals and the queues and so forth.
Just one, one procedural thing, Mr. Chairman, would you just, for the record, make sure you enter into the hearing record all of the comments, the written comments that the commission has received so that the record reflects that those comments have been fully received and are on the record?
Okay, yes, we would like to, to do that. Make sure that we enter all of those records, all of those letters and written statements into the record for tonight's meeting. I'd appreciate it. Okay.
I'll make a motion for us to continue the special permit hearing for, I guess, let me read it out directly. For the special permit application for Northwood Development LLC for approval of warehouse use, permanent site reduction, parking, temporary installation, deferred parking, retaining wall height and light pole type property located ninety dash one sixteen West Dudley Town Road in an I two zone. Owner, Connecticut Valley Properties LLC, I'll be deferred to or be continued to the next meeting on April twenty-seven, twenty.
A second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussions? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions? And the chair votes aye. Okay, next item on the agenda. Thank you. It also requires a public hearing. I'll read the notice. Notice published in the Hartford Current on March ninth and March sixteenth. Legal notice for the town of Bloomfield, special meeting, town planning and zoning. Will conduct a public hearing and a meeting on April fourth, two thousand twenty-three commencing at seven P M. To consider the following. A public hearing regarding a text amendment to the Bloomfield zoning regulations to amend section seven dot one accessory apartments to be renamed section seven dot one accessory dwelling units. Existing texts will be removed and replaced with new texts, which will allow for accessory apartments to be permitted via staff issued zoning permit. Various current restrictions will also be removed. Who's here to take that up?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Justin Lefountain, Director of Building and Land Use. I can speak to this. Some little bit of background for you. If you don't remember, this is the result of the opting out of the state statutes by the commission for accessory dwelling units. That happened in December of last year. That was followed through by a vote to continue that opt out process by the town council. The reason that opt out took place was to give the town some more flexibility in determining the regulations for accessory dwelling, accessory dwelling units in town. This set of regulations we have before you tonight is the sort of staff response to that. We went over some of this with you at a previous meeting, just as an example, to show you what way we were thinking of going with it. And we got some positive feedback from you. So what you have right now in front of you is a complete draft. And if you would indulge me for a couple of minutes, I will just go over some of the, the highlights with you here. So this most recent draft, it, it cleaned up some of the earliest drafts, typos and grammatical things. One of the things it also did is it changes in our definition section. Previously, we had accessory apartment, and this changes it to accessory dwelling unit and clarifies that. Some of the main things that this does is it allows accessory dwelling units to be permitted through a zoning permit as opposed to through a special permit. Right now, your regulations require residents to come before the commission as a public hearing process to obtain a special permit for an accessory dwelling unit. This set of regulations would allow homeowners in the, let's see here, the wrong tab, in the R eighty, R forty and R thirty residential zones to just apply for a zoning permit essentially from the zoning enforcement officer. And if they meet the requirements of the regulations, they are granted that permit. Same as we do with any sort of similar accessory structure, sheds, garages, things like that. That was done in an effort to increase the, the ease at which people can apply for this type of thing. We had heard a lot that going through a special permit process was cumbersome for people and, and honestly, staff agrees with that. So this would certainly make that a little more feasible for residents. One of the other major things that this does is it eliminates some of the occupancy requirements that were included in the current regulations. Your current regulations state that accessory dwelling unit residents need to be either elderly or disabled. Part of the problem with that is we actually don't define what those two terms mean specifically. And the other part of the problem is that it's very restrictive as to who can live there. So this removes all those restrictions and simply puts a two adult limit per accessory dwelling unit that, you know, is, is fairly standard, two adults and their dependents, I should say. What we did do is we put a minimum rental term of twelve months. This is because we didn't want these to turn into short-term rentals. You know, you hear a lot about Airbnbs and VRBO issues. If we put in this twelve-month limit, that should essentially rule out that as becoming an issue in the future for these. We do require that the owner of the dwelling live in either the main dwelling unit or the accessory dwelling unit for that same reason. We have some specific requirements that go in, in with this, you know, only one is allowed per property. It can either be attached or detached. We do have a maximum gross floor area of a thousand square feet or no larger than the footprint of the existing home, whichever is smaller. Reason we do that is we don't want these to be, you know, overshadowing any existing structures on the property. They are meant to be accessory to the dwelling unit. We state that accessory dwelling units must be located in the rear or the side yard. It's located in the rear yard. So essentially it's behind the building, the main structure. We allow the setbacks to be a minimum of ten feet from the property lines. If they choose to put it in the side yard next to the existing house, we are currently proposing that they follow the principal structure setbacks. And the reason for that is we don't want to look like we have too many houses stacked up. Uh, you know, if you're going down a road. We allow for either separate utility connections or combined utility connections. That is up to the homeowner. However, we do require that if there is a detached accessory dwelling unit, utilities must be located underground because we don't want power lines or anything going from the existing house to the, to the accessory dwelling unit. We require one off-street parking space in addition to any parking that's already, you know, required. That really is not going to be an issue that, that can be taken up by a garage space, that can be taken up by a place in driveway. But we don't want it to be adding cars to a, a street parking situation. And then the last two are essentially standard catch-all terms that we, you know, all other applicable codes are still required to be followed. And if you're placing this on a non-conforming lot, as long as you're not exceeding the lot coverage and you're meeting the setbacks, that is okay. I know that was a sort of quick overview. But if you have any questions or comments, more than happy to take them. John was a great help when he came in with helping to, you know, fix some of the grammatical and, and things that we might have otherwise missed. So it's always good to have an extra set of eyes on these things. But like I said, if you have any questions, we're more than happy to help out.
Okay, seeing that you presented, uh, not sure who's going to comment on it or if we just go directly to questions from anyone in the audience, if, if there's still anybody around. John, or John, do you want to comment on this at all or?
In the interest of time, I think that Justin has done a very adequate job. I think it's just, you know, it's, it's responding to the decision you made in December. I think it puts in some fairly straightforward, non-cumbrousome, but easily applied and enforceable regulations to allow the, the accessory apartments, accessory dwelling units, as they're now called. So I think, I think it's a, it's a, it's a good set of regulations going forward and will benefit the town.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions for anyone in the audience? Have any questions regarding this text amendment?
I don't see any hands going up at the moment.
Okay, fantastic. We'll start with the, the commission. Mr. Mallett, any questions?
Section six point thirteen, I guess, D three, where it talks about the maximum gross floor area. It, I, I'm wondering if it might be clearer. It sounds like for the detached, if it was a detached unit, it could be up to the gross floor, floor area of the primary. But if it's within the primary, I think the state had like, it could be up to forty percent. And so I, I was just getting a little confused on how it was written here. The thousand square feet, I, I get that's pretty easy, but larger than the gross floor. I'm guessing that was meant for a detached ADU.
So it was, it was either meant as attached, I mean, sorry, detached, or if you were doing an addition to the home.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
That would make sense. Yeah, that clarifies it. I have, I, I can save my comment if you want.
Yes. Ms. Blint, any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
All righty. Mr. Hussein.
Yeah, a quick one. What, did, did we say anything about the insurance requirements? Is their homeowner, homeowner is going to, they have to have an additional policy or how does that work again? I forgot.
Yeah, so I looked into that a little bit for you because I know that came up last time. We typically don't get into, in zoning regulations, that kind of thing. It could complicate things further for us. They will have to go by whatever their homeowner's policies would say. So we would leave that up to the homeowner to determine.
But what if something does happen, then their home insurance doesn't cover it? Can they come after us because we don't have anything specifying in the regulations?
Yeah, I, I don't believe so because we don't require anything like that for any other type of use. Like, for example, garage, you know, garage could have some issues in terms of, you know, vehicles being stored and things like that. So I'm, I'm not concerned about that.
Okay, great. And then the other thing too is, um, I don't know, remember if it's in the catch-all, but this is a deal of risk again. Do we have anything, we'll assume the homeowner, homeowner's insurance is going to cover any risk so that, let's say, the tenant or the family member did become disgruntled, then they want to claim, well, this is my property, you can't put me out. We have something in there that the homeowner is covered to, or how, how does that?
I'm not sure. Could you, could you repeat the question? I didn't quite follow that one.
I think even though it sometimes will have a family member and/or sometime a rental property and then someone all of a sudden doesn't want to pay or doesn't want to vacate. We have rules and right, we have something in there that protects or safeguards the homeowner, correct? Or, or is it? All right, go ahead.
Not, not typically in zoning. And, and John, I don't know if you know of anything that I might be.
I would agree that that's not in the purview of zoning. That's, um, that's really a, um, a dispute between two parties. And is, and is controlled by non-zoning, you know, zoning has never got into the, any issues regarding ownership or dispute of ownership or payment of rent or those types of things. I mean, that's, that's really tort law and non-zoning law.
Okay, just want to make sure that, because we're putting it out there, I want to make sure we're covered too. Thanks.
I think we are, Kevin.
Thank you.
All set, Ken? Uh, Mr. Bolton.
No questions.
Mr. Oliver.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I do have a question, Justin. We, you also talked about in a previous meeting when we talked about, I think there was question about making square footage of property smaller to be able to be buildable. Is that something that, that got added in or no?
Uh, I think what you might be talking about, and stop me if I'm wrong, is the whole issue of building on a non-conforming lot. Yep, and we did put a stipulation in there that if you are meeting, if you're not exceeding the lot coverage and you are still meeting the lot setback requirements, you are allowed to do this.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, I don't have any questions either. Can we move on to comments?
How you gonna forget me?
Oh, I'm so, um. I am so sorry.
In my dialect, hello.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. So just to piggyback on what, um, Hussein said. Regarding evictions, if someone doesn't pay rent, anybody living under your roof, you can evict them. It's civil and it's tort according to John. You just go file. And it's a summary process. That's right up my alley. Um, so question. Oh, also, insurance, the insurance company will decide because if I don't have insurance on my home and it burns down, I can't sue the town because it's my neglect. So an accessory dwelling, you would think would fall under that because. The insurance company will decide because now, you know, it's an obstructive property deeds, all of that, attorneys, anyway. Um, if, what if denied, you see like six thirteen C. Occupancy, number two. My question is, what if? You're denied because it says here. The, the affidavit expires at the time of change of ownership of said property and a new affidavit, blah, blah, blah. What if denied, do you have to then tear it down, uh, close up? The accessory dwelling, how is that taken care of?
After the change of ownership, uh, so you would have to state that they are going to comply with these requirements. Um, so that would essentially mean that they would say that they are not going to rent it for more than twelve months. And that they are not going to, that, that the, the owner is gonna live in either the accessory dwelling unit or the, the principal dwelling unit. There's no intent with these to have anybody have to remove these, uh, this. Your current regulations do have a removal requirement. And we wanted to take that out because that is, it's, it's really not feasible for people to have to remove their. Something like this installed in their home.
Yeah, so I just needed clarity on that because I did remember seeing that in the old one. Now, as far as the setbacks go on six thirteen, it said setbacks ten feet from the rear of the property lines. Now what's from the front?
So if they are, if they are in the rear yard, they'll be behind the, the existing home. So that will largely depend on what type of lot you're in and, uh, you know, the setup of each individual lot. We don't have a set requirement because if we, if you're putting it in the rear yard, you're already gonna by default comply with the front yard principal setback.
You're muted, Michelle.
So if you're in the rear yard, um, let me see, the thousand square, the thousand square feet. What is this? Maximum of a thousand? Okay, so you can get from, from a shed size on up. Okay, got you. That's it, thanks.
All right, we're gonna move on to comments. Actually, I'll, I'll start with Mr. Oliver. Any comments?
Oh, yeah, just a lot of work put in by everybody, John, Justin and Linda. And you taking over his chair and it's been a long night and I think everybody did an awesome job. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Mr. Hussein, any comments?
More comments, thank you.
Mr. Bolton.
Uh, no comments, thank you.
Mr. Adams.
Well, you back to me, okay. Um, good job, Justin. It, it really is clear and concise. You did a good job and it's easy to follow and I think the residents should be happy with this from the phone calls that I had received. The last time they were, you know, curious to see what we're gonna end up with. This actually is pretty good.
Thank you.
Ms., Ms. Blint.
This is way better than what we had. Let's vote.
Uh, Mr. Millet.
Uh, before we go, I do have one comment. I, I hope the commission will consider, but maybe I can get clarity on it. Um, in section six point thirteen B. It says the dwelling units will only be permitted and then it lists a couple residential zones. I, I'd like to see that be all and the reason why I say that, and I know the comments that were put out there was. The intent was not to create duplicate duplexes out of or multi-families. So I think if we stipulated that if there's a single family, which we define in our regulations, what a single family. So in any single, existing single-family residence. Regardless of what zone it's in and whether it's conforming or not, that these would be allowed. So that, that would be my feedback. Um, I, I get the concern of creating duplexes and try, and it just kinda keeps growing with ADUs. So if we say it's an existing single family in any zone. I, I, I would be more comfortable with that. I, I get that certain zones allow duplexes, but now we're talking. All the regulations that go with multifamily and I don't think we need to go there. So that's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I'll just make a brief one. Uh, Justin, I think you and, uh, John did a great job. Given the timeframe that you had to work with. And I think actually at that time, I think you had just started. And that was kinda like one of the major priorities that we had on the table. So, um, you guys did a good job.
I do see we have one comment from the audience as well.
Oh, okay.
There we go. I'm unmuted. This is Rhonda Kyle on Grant Hill Road. Uh, I just am really, really impressed with, uh, Justin. And, uh, the whole process that, that he's been through and, uh, the way he listened to, to input and, um. I'm real impressed with all of this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, I'm sure, Justin, that you don't need any further comments to wrap this up. So at this time, um. I'll leave it up to the commission. Oh, I'm sorry. A motion, a motion, we need a motion to close the public. Okay, thank you. Is there a second? Yeah, great. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, abstention, chair vote sign. Okay, now. At this time, commission.
So wait, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, is, are those that one public hearing for, we combine both?
Uh, well, no, they're, they're actually listed separate. So they're, they're two different texts. So I think we have to do.
And, and if I could jump in, staff's recommendation for the, uh, the solar regulation is to table that. There's a little bit more work we wanna do on those, um, so they're not quite in a finalized state. So I'd recommend tabling those till your next meeting. So what, what you can do is open the hearing, uh, because this is a commission-led text amendment, there is no timeframe associated with it. Better than opening it and, and tabling that to the next, the next meeting.
Okay. All right, so we still need a motion for the last one that we're on.
I'll, I'll make a motion. Can I have a clarity on the latest, was it version three?
Yes.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment for the accessory dwelling units. Um, I would make the caveat, uh, or, or make the one request to change the wording for the. All zones for the ADU, um, that would be one change in the text. Instead of the specific residence, residential zones listed out. And also specify that it, it only applies to single-family residents as defined. In the regulation, just to, you know, make sure that we, I think, get the intent of what the planners put in there.
For clarity, if by my dad, can you specify where it is?
In, in six, so in version three, six point thirteen point B, applicability. Um, in that first sentence there, uh, these accessory dwelling units shall only be permitted and. And I would just change it to be, shall be permitted in all zones. And apply only to single-family residences as defined, uh, or single-family dwellings as defined in our regulations.
I'll second the, um, amendment.
Okay, it's been moved in second.
Right, go ahead. Sorry, Chair, go ahead, do your thing, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, no, go ahead. What, what were you gonna say?
No, I was gonna say, should we attach, take care of one thing at a time? Start with the amended language and then make the motion to accept.
Well, I think Steve, Steve, uh, already did that. Yeah.
So, oh, this is for the comments, okay.
No, this is for the actual approval of the text. Yeah, I think Steve, Steve already made the motion to approve it. Right, so now, uh, Kevin, you seconded?
Correct, what are the amendments that, uh, Commissioner Millet, um, adjusted?
Fantastic, okay. Been moved in second. Any further discussion on that?
One quick note, Mr. Chair, we just need to set an effective date and I would recommend May first, just to keep things, uh, simple. And we need a certain amount of time to publish the notice and everything like that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll add the May first effective date.
Okay, great. All right, is there any further discussions on this?
Sorry. So Steve, so that's the only language you wanted to add to it, the single-family dwelling as defined? I thought there was another one.
Uh, so, um, based on version three, when I made the, uh, the motion, I just, uh. Requested that we, we change the language to be permitted in all zones. And then to clarify that the ADUs could only be applied to a s-. A single-family residence or dwelling as defined in our regulations.
I misunderstood. I thought there was a second one. That's fine, go ahead. I'm finished.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, extension, chair vote sigh. Okay, the next item, we're just gonna open it and continue it, correct, just? All right. The next item also requires a public hearing. I'll read the notice, uh, published in the Hartford Current, March ninth into sixteen. Uh, legal notice for a special meeting Town Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, hearing will be held. On April fourth, two thousand twenty-three, commencing at seven PM to consider the following. Public hearing regarding a text amendment to the Bloomfield zoning regulations to create a new section, six dot thirteen. Accessory renewable en- energy structures for residential u- uses. This new section will provide requirements and standards for the installation of building mounted solar panels. Free-standing solar panels and parking lot canopy solar panels. Okay, we are going to table this, so the chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to table.
To table this and we don't necessarily have to specify next meeting. You say this is, um, open until we get to it. All right, there's a motion on the floor to table this. It's been moved in second. Any further discussion on this?
Yes, uh, if you would, Mr. Chair. Um, considering that there were ten or eleven agenda items this evening. If you could make sure that there are less on the next agenda item, I would push this to the following month and not our April twenty-seventh meeting.
Right, well, actually, yeah, this is wide open. So Justin, you can schedule this at your convenience, I guess.
So, so what we'll probably do is just because the hearing's now open, we'll keep it as a standing agenda item and if we get to it, we get to it. If we don't, that's okay too.
Great.
Okay. All right. So we just left off at any discussions. Is there any further discussions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, abstentions. And chair votes sigh. So this is being continued. Under new business.
Um, Mr. Chair. I don't know if, um, there's anyone left in the attendees list that, that is presented. It looks like they're all from the public. Is it possible to, um. Table the rest of items for our next meeting? If that, I, I, I'm, I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know.
Yeah, I had one, one question as well, it, because the, the site, we approved the special permit for. The. Are the car at KNS Southwood, but we did not do the, the site plan, I don't think.
Right.
They were not put together.
Okay, yep. But, okay, for B.
And the same thing for Nor- Nor- I'm sorry, um, for, um, Northwood and, 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 um.
Well, I know, see, we've already continued to the next meeting.
Cause none of the applicants are here.
Okay.
If I could make one recommendation, Mr. Chair. Um, the sign application before you, I know that the. Uh, we, we told the applicant, they don't need to be here for that. It is a. For whatever reason, the regulations require that a freestanding sign be approved by the commission, uh, through a site plan procedure. If it meets the regulations, it, it essentially has to be approved by the commission. Uh, so this is a bit of a formality. So we are hoping that if it's okay with you, uh.
You can, you can handle that without, uh, any of our intervention? Is that what you prefer?
You would, you would need to have a vote on it right now, but, um, and, and John actually reviewed this application. So John, if you wanna make any.
Yeah, it's, it's really straightforward. It's a freestanding sign. The only condition we put on it is one, and, and it meets all of the regulations in terms of location, size. It's, it's, um, not lit, uh, internally. Um, is that when they, when they install it, that they, uh, they get approval from the town planner. Uh, on the landscaping that goes around the base, but this is, this is about as straightforward as they come and I think that, um. That's why we suggested the applicant not, we knew it was gonna be a long meeting. Uh, that wasn't necessary for them to be there. We've all looked at it, it's a, it's, it's an attractive sign. Um, it's properly placed and, um, I would agree with Justin if the commission could take a couple of minutes and just. Uh, approve it, um, I think that, um. Uh, artifacts, um, and their client would be, um, would be appreciative.
Okay, um, just a quick one. There's no questions or any comments regarding this particular application from any of the commissioners, is it? Okay, seeing that, the chair entertained a motion on this.
I'll, I'll move to approve the sign permit application from Artifacts Incorporated to install. Uh, freestanding sign at twenty-five Northwood Drive, uh, with the conditions outlined in the March seventeenth memo. Uh, by the Assistant Director of Building and Land Use dated March seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
You second that, do I? Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, extension, chair vote sigh. These other two, um, how do you wanna handle these? Since there's no one here.
Is, is there any deadlines with the, the site plan for, for the car dealer? I mean, we did see the presentation, but.
I would, if, if you reviewed it at the same time, I'd recommend that you just make the motion to approve now. I, I assume you approved the special permit. I wasn't, I wasn't here at that point, but, uh.
They did.
Yeah, so I, I would just recommend you make that motion as well to take care of that.
All right, uh, next on the, on the agenda is a revised site plan application from Yanil. Medina for approval for a used car dealer and repair shop. Property located at fifteen Southwood Drive in an I two zone, owner KNS Southwood, comma LLC. As per the discussions from the planner. Um, is there a motion on this application?
That's, Steve can read it. I, I'll say so move.
You, you gotta just go ahead and just read it out and.
All right, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the, the revised site plan application, uh, from. Yanil Medina for, uh, approval for a used car dealer. And repair shop property located at fifteen Southwood Drive in an I two zone, owner KNS Southwood LLC.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussions? It's been moved in second. Any further discussions? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, extension, chair votes aye. Um, C was tabled, so there's nothing we can actually do with that.
Correct. And D also.
And D.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay, yep, yeah. All right, any quick staff updates or anything?
Uh, one real quick, uh, just so you are aware, the April twenty-seventh meeting, um, we, we had a request to set up a special meeting in between what was supposed to be the March meeting and the April twenty-seventh meeting, um, for a public hearing for the Green Machine on the hills. Um, due to the fact that we did not have a quorum at the last meeting, we had to essentially push everything to this meeting, and because that application requires a public hearing, um, we have to follow the timelines with notice. They have submitted their application, so that will go forward on the April twenty-seventh meeting. Uh, but I did want to let you know that that request had come in, uh, unfortunately, just due to the timing, and especially with the Hartford Current, there's not many ways to get them in before that. Um, so that, that's the update on that one. Um, and due to the time, time of night, I, I have no other updates for you.
You, you good, Jonathan?
Mr. Chairman, I'm good. I would just like to, um, express my thanks and appreciation to all of you for gathering on an off night, for a long night. And I think that, um, that is just, um, very commendable service to the commission, but particularly to the town of Bloomfield, and on behalf of myself, and I think the entire planning staff, um, we thank you very much for your, your service, and particularly for your extra duty this evening.
I second what John said.
Thank you.
Thank you guys.
You guys, thank you.
Yeah, thanks for pulling it all together.
A motion?
Moved.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's, uh, this meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Oh, good night, guys.
Good holiday, everybody.
Oh, before we go.
Oh, that's right, Easter, yeah.
What's that?
Yeah. Oh, no, I'm just thinking one holiday, but it's Easter.
Oh, that's a retired mind, go ahead. I just wanted to know if anyone had, had followed up with, uh, Barry, and, and maybe we should stop the recording before I ask that question.